Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the October 25th, 2018 meeting of the Citrus Heights City Council. We're going to start off with the flag salute, and I'd like to ask Grant if he'd please come and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much. I guess it's roll call time.
Councilmember Daniels?
Here.
Councilmember Fox?
Present.
Councilmember Slowey?
Present.
Vice Mayor Bruins?
Present.
And Mayor Miller?
Here.
Tonight's meeting of the Citrus Heights City Council is cable cast live on Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel. The meeting is closed caption and webcast at citrusheights.net. Tonight's meeting replay is on Monday, October 29th at 9:00 a.m. and Wednesday, October 31st at 6:00 p.m. on Channel 14. A DVD copy is available for checkout from any library branch.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Approval of agenda.
Any changes? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Second.
Motion second to approve the agenda. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed or abstentions? Agenda is approved.
Next.
Next item is Presentation Number Four is a proclamation of the City of Citrus Heights
in recognition of Manufacturing Awareness and Appreciation Month, October 2018.
Okay, and I think I mentioned in the last council meeting, on October 5th, I had the pleasure of touring a company over in Rancho Cordova called the Saratyzit Group, formerly Promax Tools, and I was just totally amazed, and in a little bit, I'm going to have our own Citrus Heights resident, Tim Schaefer, who works there, come explain more, because I'm sure you'll do a better job than I do. But I have for them a proclamation. I was there on Manufacturing Day, and this is a proclamation for Manufacturing Awareness and Appreciation Month. And a few of the things it says is Manufacturing Day is celebrating nationally on the first Friday of the month of October to showcase facilities in an effort to educate the community about manufacturing career opportunities. Manufacturers provide over 35,000 jobs in the Sacramento region and over 12 million in the nation. Manufacturing is the most important industry in the United States, contributing nearly $2.2 trillion of our economy. And it goes on and on, and I hope that when I present this to you, that you'll put it in a nice frame and display it in a prominent location at your company. And having said that, I'd like to call Tim Schaefer up to the podium and present this to you, and then let you explain a little bit more about what your company does. And I will say, I was getting a little bit of heat from some of the Rancho Cordova council members that were there about the fact that they have industrial in their city, and Tim informed us all that a majority of the employees come from Citrus Heights. So, back at you, Rancho.
He's the CEO and also Vice President of the Sacramento Valley Manufacturing Initiative. This is a group of manufacturers that have sort of pooled resources together to put together a training program. So I just want to introduce Joe, so he can kind of talk a little bit about SVMI and a little bit more, and then I'll, we'll get into the, running the video.
Good afternoon, or good evening, Honorable Mayor and distinguished council members. My name is Joe Wernett. I am CEO of TryTool, Inc. We are a turnkey engineering solutions provider. Basically, we're a manufacturer. We build things. We have 160 employees globally, 120 locally. This is the Sacramento Valley. So what I'm getting at is, as a manufacturer here in the region, supporting power plants across the globe, from solar to nuclear power to geothermal to hydroelectric to transportation of chemicals. This is what TryTool does. We are a manufacturer where we have machinists and welders that go into the field and do machining and welding. So that is why I talk about Sacramento Valley Manufacturing Initiative. We are a conglomerate of local manufacturing companies, run by manufacturers for manufacturers to create a workforce pool of employment for the future. The technical skills have deteriorated from our educational system over the past 25 years. 200,000 welders are needed in 2020 that we don't have currently, across the whole world of people that make things. These are skill sets and jobs. Like in government, healthcare, and education, manufacturing employs the variety of job and career paths, everything from technical sales to janitorial, to accounting, to finance. So as Vice President of the Sacramento Valley Manufacturing Initiative, us coming together to work with the K through 14 system, the 12, or the 13, 14 is post-secondary education, the technical programs, the community colleges. These are places where our students can get the soft skills and some hard skills that they need to have good-paying jobs for the rest of their lives. We're also heavily working with the returning veterans to upskill them and get them to work. SVMI has had about 26 activities in the region just this month, from speaking engagements in front of city council. We had five high school teachers spend three days during their summer break at manufacturing facilities so that they know how to teach their students, teaching their students things like, when you turn the steering wheel on your car, what wheels turn? Why is a manhole cover round? These are common sense necessities for us to be able to create and maintain our current lifestyles, maintenance. They talk about automation manufacturing the future. Well, who's going to maintain our future? Who's going to repair these bridges, roadways, tunnels, pipelines, everything that we've gotten used to having? It's not some robot building some production volume items. So Sacramento Valley Manufacturing is bringing the community together. We're working with the educators, the Board of Supervisors, the education system, the community colleges, and they're on our panel, they're on our board, we're sitting on the educational boards. Why? Because 60% of our student population that graduate high school don't go on a post-secondary education. These students can be and are making tens of hundreds of thousands of dollars a year if they can be drug-free, hardworking, dedicated, and show up to work and care. So I just wanted to let you all know a little bit about SVMI, working with our Sacramento Valley. We're all in this together for our future, and as we know, idle hands are the devil's playground.
Very good.
So, thank you, and I'll let Tim speak.
I'll be, I'll be quite brief. So, a little bit, most, some people have noticed that I'm wearing a Promax shirt. Well, Promax is the, was a company that was a privately-held company here in the Sacramento, or it was actually, their foundation was his California Tool Grinding, right here, right across from Harris Welding Supply on Auburn Boulevard. 8430 Auburn Boulevard was the address of the original address of the founding of the company. In 1990, they moved to Rancho Cordova and, and actually established the Promax brand name, and then in 2014, we were purchased by a very large tool manufacturer, worldwide company, employs about 16,000 people across the world called Saratyzit. And Saratyzit is, is well-steeped in the tooling business, where, you know, there's lots of people that are involved in our industry. There are investment groups, the, this company is not an investment group, these, these are, and we're, we're involved with everything, we touch everybody's life. Our product is a, you know, lots of people want to call them tool bits, they're not a tool bit, they're a carbide in mill, and they really do touch every, we make, they're used to make aircraft parts, medical implants, endoscopes, it's just a huge range of product that, that's produced with our, using our tooling. So, with that, I'll go ahead, and this is a great day, we had a really good turnout. Thank you from Steve Miller, Mayor Steve Miller, for, for attending. It was a great turnout, so I'd, I'd like to, to show everyone the, the video that we ran that day. On day, October 29th, we're launching our CNC apprenticeship program. This is a, a program that's sponsored by SVMI, and it kicks off, it's an 80-hour course, sort of a accelerated course for learning CNC machining. We have 14 candidates, and about 10 of those candidates will come from Citrus Heights.
That's pretty cool.
So, thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you for having me on that, too. It was really good, and I think the thing that impressed me the most, and I'll call them drill bits, sorry, but you know how they have that corkscrew in them, what, what really amazed me was the fact that some of them need to be cooled, and they have these teeny tiny holes through them, well, they just don't go straight through, they follow the helix or whatever, I don't even know how you do that, but it's just amazing, the precision that you have there.
Well, thank you very much, it was a pleasure to have you.
Thanks, Tim.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Mr. Mayor, if I could, very quickly, Mr. Wernett said something that's very important about the youth and coming in, learning and getting started. He has, as one of his employees, my son, who started with his company under his parents when he was 19, just when he had turned 19-years-old, and I'm not going to say how old he is now, but he's been there for a whole bunch of years. And it was a prime example of what good companies, good training, and good experience can do to develop young men and women into this field, and when you think that there's over a million jobs a year in the United States that go to career technical employees that they need to fill, it's a wonderful thing they're doing, and so I appreciate what you've done in your presentation. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. And next item, please.
Next item is Presentation Five, the presentation on the 10th Annual Holiday Referral Program.
It's that time of year already, huh?
Should I start by saying Merry Christmas, or just remind you that you have two more months to shop?
It's still October.
Hey, it's already launched at our department, so, good evening, Mayor and Members of the Council. My name is Sandy Moravio. I'm the Support Services Manager for the Police Department, and I am proud to say that I've been running the Holiday Referral Program for the city for 10 years now, and it seems like this was yesterday that we just ran this last year. So tomorrow, we're going to start our social media marketing and do some email campaigns on our annual holiday referral program, because we are looking for great families, and we depend on the community, everyone out there, we need your help. The Holiday Referral Program is a referral program where the Police Department leads the program, but we actually work with the entire community, including all of the service clubs. We have the Boy Scouts that help us out every year, many, many local businesses, and then just regular people that are looking to help somebody else that's in need during the holiday season. So the challenge that we have is to find the right people, and we depend on our community to help us with that. The schools do a lot of referrals as well. What we're looking for is people that really have had a hardship in the last 12 months. It could be a job loss, a medical issue, a loss of a family member or a breadwinner. So we're really looking for those type of people, and they're generally the type of people themselves that aren't going to ask for help, so that's why we call it a referral program, so people like you can, can refer people into our, our program, and we can vet through them and find out, excuse me, find out what they need and what we can do to help them. So the Police Department screens all of the candidates that are referred into our program, and we screen down quite, quite a few, because we really are truly looking for the hardships. The applications are going to be available on the website for you to fill out and refer folks to our program, and it can be turned in to the Police Department. And kind of how the program works, I'll show you the calendar in just a minute, but last year, some of our statistics, we had, we helped 37 families with 87 adults and 263 children. Sometimes we continue after the program to help families that come to our attention, and I'm certainly communicating with people throughout the year where we also try to help a little bit here and there with services. Now, our guidelines are, this is for Citrus Heights, so this is for our residents that, that live in our community. Now, I do want to mention that there are a lot of other services for people that live out of the county, and I do get a lot of requests from people out of the county, so they can be referred to the Salvation Army or the Sheriff's Department's toy program, and they will take care of those. But remember, our program is just for our community. The families are referred to the program, and again, it has to be a hardship in the last 12 months, which is how our selection process works. And of course, how else can you help if you don't refer somebody, but you would like to join in our program? You can certainly donate items. On the board, we have clothing, toys, blankets. We're looking for, you know, needs versus wants, we don't do electronic equipment and things like that. We try to do very the, the basic things, and of course, we give the children's tons of toys. So, you know, we want to make it a great holiday for the, for the children. As well, we do food, we, we donate food, you can donate food to the Police Department. The Rotary partners with us, and they do the food boxes for the traditional holiday, but the community also donates food, and we augment those boxes with the different items that, that they can use throughout the, the next couple of months. So our program timelines are noted on the screen. We launch tonight's, our first announcement, and then we will start marketing it starting tomorrow, and then Monday, we start accepting applications, we'll get a press release out as well. Again, the applications will be on our website, you can pick them up at the Police Department. We're happy to help if you have any questions, anybody at the Police Department can answer any questions for you, or any of our officers as well. So the program, we start accepting donations around November 19th. If you have things that you want to drop up earlier, that's not a problem, we certainly will take new items or anything that, that's newer that you would like to, new that you would like to donate to the program. On around Thursday, December 20th, we actually do the pickup for the people that we've selected into the program, and they will come to the community center, they'll pick up their items. We also, the Police Department and the community joins together, and we do a caravan, we deliver to about four or five families each year, which is a lot of fun. It's kind of scary, because there's about 20 lease cars and 20 other cars, so it's kind of fun. How can you help? We are looking, again, for people to donate, you can adopt a family. We're looking for people to help us with interviews and bilingual interviews, if you know of somebody that would like to join us, and of course, there's other opportunities in the program if you want to reach out to us. So, excuse me. Lastly, I just want to let you know how important this is for our community. We partner with the Rotary, all the service clubs, Seroptimist, the Women's Club, Kiwanis, several of the businesses. We, last year, picked up a, a car repair shop that is helping us out. So we're, whatever you have, and whatever skills you have, and if you know of anybody, we'd certainly like you to join our program. Again, my name is Sandy, I work at the Police Department, and you can contact me there at any time, and I'm happy to, to introduce you into our program and work with you. Any questions?
Any questions or comments for Sandy? Thank you so much for everything you do.
You're welcome. Looking forward to this year. Thank you.
Okay, next item, please.
Next item is comments by councilmembers and regional board updates.
Al, do you want to lead us off?
Sure.
I think I picked them last time, but, oh, well.
You did, but that's okay, I get to steal somebody else's thunder. Quiet two weeks, the Cable Board and the Transportation Authority did not meet, they, they don't meet again until next month, so those have been quiet. I attended the Halloween Parade and Craft Fair that was put on by the Citrus Heights marching band, great, great event, they did a lot of work. The Cook family that are the major movers and shakers of that program, working with the city, did a great event. The parade was, was small, but well, you know, pretty well-attended, good group of folks showed out at the Craft Fair, so it was actually a fun day, met a lot of good folks there, with Jeff and with Brett part of the day, I'll let them talk about that. Today, we had Sacramento Air Quality met, and to tie in with what Mr. Wernett and Tim were talking about on manufacturing, there's a big move right now, it's called Ramp Up Factory Concept, and it's small to mid-sized businesses that produce either a single component or up to full prototypes of, of items in small shops all around the world. They're really looking strong right now, in Germany is where part of this concept has been coming out of, and it's all modern technology, it's all designed to, to meet the future needs of clean air technology in all sorts of services, from vehicles to, from automobiles to commercial vehicles. So they had a pretty good demonstration today of some of those technology issues that are going to be coming forward, and we'll see more about that in the near future. They're talking a lot about the mobile source versus stationary source on air pollution, and some of the potential rules and regulation changes that may be coming up, and the zero emissions technology in utility and equipment and vehicles that we will be seeing this coming up this next year. A lot of it is, I think part of it is hopeful, that they can get there, but a lot of it is actually already there, it's already working, and it's just now proving out those designs and making sure they work and putting them into the field. They talked a little bit about SmartRide, and I found out today, they confirmed that the, the telephone app is the most-used way of SmartRide folks getting together on SmartRide to schedule their rides, and they talked also about the Jump Bike System, which is, we haven't seen here, but it's in downtown, and some of the surrounding areas are going to expand it out to the south, down towards Meadowview and that area, and that corridor, it's vehicles, you pick it up at Point A, ride wherever you want to be, leave it there, and it's, they have several that are posted in these different jurisdictions, so they're, the corridor they're using doesn't include Citrus Heights at this time, but we are scheduled for some time out in the future that they will take a look at that for us also here. So it proves out to be pretty well. Then the last thing that we came up with is the SmartRide ridership's main goal right now, or the main goal that they are, they are reaching, is those folks that want to go from their home to other modes of transportation, whether it's a, one of the full-service buses or to the light rail stations to go into downtown, that's a big part of what their business is. So they continue to sing the successes of SmartRide and how much it is doing towards air, air quality with going to their electric vehicles. And so that would be it for me, sir. Thank you.
All right. I got to remember next time you go last. Brett?
Thank you. Um, yeah, I got, I got over to the Antelope Crossing Spooktacular a little late, but good crowd and fun time for the kids. If you haven't gone to that one, be sure to get to it next year. And then, as Al mentioned, the parade on Saturday, what a fun parade, and a little disappointing for the crowd and the participation. A lot of hard work goes into putting that parade on, you could tell, and it's a fun parade for kids, and so next year, especially if you're in the area, you might want to go to that parade, and your kids will really enjoy it. It was a lot of fun, a lot of good times on that one. Saturday is National Prescription Takeback Day again, I believe the PD will be open from 10:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m., something like that, to where you can bring back your unwanted or expired meds for disposals, for disposal. You can also, at that time, pick up a prescription bottle with a locking cap. Last year, Citrus Heights led the way in providing that for our residents, and there are still those available. Just as an update to that, today, 39 other entities have followed our lead in purchasing those for their citizens and residents, and another six are in the final stages of obtaining them, and then over 200 are looking into obtaining those for their, their citizens and residents, too. And the manufacturer, or the provider, I should say, has wanted to thank us personally as leading the way, and so I'm very happy to say that that has caught on, and if you want that, you can come to the PD on Saturday and get that, or you can also come to City Hall at any time and get one of those. That's it.
Thank you. Jeff?
Thank you. So the Mayor and I, who make up the Finance Committee, met. Actually, more to come on that in our November meeting, so I won't go there. SACOG, which is the Sacramento Area Council of Governments, met. We are currently going through the process of determining if we stay and meet where we're continuing to meet, or if they move their office. I won't rehash Spooktacular or Halloween. The Library Board met today, and it took me 45 minutes to get here from downtown, not happy about that. But we are contemplating a expanded potential library in Orangevale, and if you don't know, within the budget this year, we did approve for a $1.2 million upgrade to the Sylvan Oaks Library. It's not an expansion, it's just new furniture, new carpeting, more computers, all that good stuff. And then, lastly, I'm going to try to get this right, but I'm going to look to Amy to keep me honest here on the voting, in case you folks missed it on the news, or driving around town, or on the radio, you know, there's an election in 12 days. And the City Hall is one of the vote centers for Sacramento County, we're in an experiment throughout the state. So both City Hall and the library are open Monday through Friday from 8:00 to 5:00 for you to drop off your pink envelope. If you drop them off in their voting box, you don't have to put two stamps on it, so that's good. Now, City Hall, being a vote center, will be open both Saturday and Sunday, November 3rd and 4th, from 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. here. You can come in here if you've lost your ballot, you can get a new one. If you want to bring your ballot in and, you know, fill it out here and drop it off, you can do that, again, Saturday and Sunday, the 3rd and the 4th.
And Councilmember Slowey, if, I just want to clarify, the hours will actually be 9:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. for the vote center.
So they get to sleep in? Okay. So 9:00 to 5:00, Saturday and Sunday here, and then on Election Day, these, this room will be open from?
7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m.
Okay. Thank you. So feel free to come on down, again, if you lost your ballot, they'll give you a replacement. If, if not, you should have got one in the mail. And unfortunately, if you vote between now and then, there's no way to get all those darn ads off the TV. I'd love to hit a little button that says I voted, don't want to see that crap no more, but that's just me. So that's it.
Thank you, Jeff. Jeanie?
Thank you. I haven't had any board meetings since our last council meeting, so my report's very short, and unfortunately, I was out of town, and missed the Halloween Parade, but I know it was wonderful, and gets better every year. I did have an opportunity last, this past week, to speak at the local MLS chapter of the Sacramento Area Realtors Association, and they invite me back every October, just to give them an update about Citrus Heights, and want to thank Ronny Sherman for putting together some talking points for me, and it's exciting to be able to talk to our city and highlight the good things about it to the, these realtors who are looking for reasons to bring people into Citrus Heights to buy homes. So that's all I have to report.
Well, thank you. Okay, for myself, and Jeanie, you probably forgot about this, on October 11th, we both attended ribbon-cutting and groundbreaking for
Oh, I, I did forget to mention.
The senior living facility called the Oars on Greenback Lane, close to, is that Van Marren? Yeah.
Dewey.
Dewey, thank you. And, yeah, Spooktacular was great. The one thing the Mayor has to do, gets to do, is judge the Halloween Parade, and that's tough. I hate that, all the dog costumes and kids were just so cute, but what a fun time. And I also snuck over a little later in the afternoon to Art in the Park over at Rush Home, and that was a really mellow, laid-back event, but really cool, so I was glad I got by there. Monday, I missed RT, I had a family event in the Bay Area, and I've got a note from my mom. I had a family event in the Bay Area and I've got a note for my mom. Um, but, uh, so I don't have anything to report on regional transit. This Wednesday, I did meet with Metro Fire Director Randy Ozali and, uh, Jason Sample with, uh, Gateway Community Charter. Um, and we talked a little bit about a, a Safety Academy and, and I think it's probably appropriate to talk more about this at our strategic planning session, um, and, uh, what success will look like with something like that. So, Metro Fire is very interested and, and will put all the parties together.
One more thing.
One more thing.
What you done?
I'm, oh, just wanted to mention, uh, I always like getting these letters. Uh, this one is from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, letting us know that, uh, our plan has been reviewed and approved by HUD and the grant assistance that is being approved is followed is our community developed block, block grant for almost seven-hundred thousand dollars. And I just wanted to give a shout out to, uh, Nicole Piva for her great job she's done on the whole CDBG process. And, uh, this was from Kimberly Nash, the director of the, uh, Community Planning and Development Division for HUD. So, shout out to Nicole.
Okay. This Saturday, we are having the first ever Community Help Day of, um, from nine to one, I believe, here at City Hall. And it's an invitation to the community, if you like to garden, get your hands dirty, come out to City Hall, help us spread bark, do a little work in the yard and, um, although I'm sure there'll be treats. There's gotta be treats, so.
Yes, thank you.
Nine to one this Saturday here at City Hall, but outside yard work. Thanks.
Thanks, Jeanie. Forgot all about that. Okay, we're ready to move on to the next item.
Next item is public comment and members of the audience may address the council on any item of interest to the public and within the council's purview or on any agenda item before or during the council's consideration of the item. If you wish to address the council during the meeting, fill out a speaker identification sheet and give it to myself. When you're called upon to speak, step forward to the podium and state your name for the record. Normally, speakers are limited to five minutes each with thirty minutes being allowed for all comments and any public comments beyond the initial thirty minutes may be heard at the conclusion of the agenda and the mayor has the discretion to lengthen or shorten the allotted time.
Thank you, Amy. Um, first one I want to call, and I, I don't have a name, but, uh, eighty-one thirty-two Holly.
Oh.
And, and, uh, well, right next door is Mel Ball.
Yes, ma'am.
Come on up.
Hello, hello. My name is Mel and, uh, those are some very interesting topics I've heard here tonight. Nothing will compare to what I have, though. And we're gonna talk about speed bumps.
Right.
Everybody loves that. Anyhow, um, the reason I came here tonight is that we have a terrible situation in Citrus Heights on Holly Drive and Cherry Glen. And it's gotten to the where now, I've lived there thirty-eight years and it's gotten worse and worse. And we have people that are driving forty-five, fifty miles an hour down Holly Drive, which is a street, doesn't have sidewalks, it's just barely wide enough to squeeze two cars past it. And, uh, I've seen things that, you know, make me shake, you know, the, the way they do. I've seen people with these young kids with their hot rod cars and pull over and then they'll open the throttle wide open and take off and use it for a drag strip. Because I've seen people come on the blind hill, come over on the wrong side of the road. And this is all happening. Nobody drives twenty-five, that's the speed limit, which should be probably fifteen or twenty. But it is absolutely, uh, through the years, we brought this up before and actually I was against it because I don't like speed bumps in the past, but now it's, as the years have gone past, we have, uh, way more traffic. They use it as a bypass to go off of Auburn Boulevard. If it's crowded there, then they swing down and zoom down the street, then cut back over or they cut back off of Antelope and they'll take, uh, Mariposa and come back down. And it just keeps getting to, it's to the point now that, you know, there's, we have a lot of, uh, people that walk down there with, uh, baby strollers in the nighttime, you know, walking and other people walking their dogs. Uh, we have handicap folks, uh, one that I know personally, his name's Jake and he works over at, uh, the, uh, Rush Park in the summer. And that's his route to go to work. And he's, he drives a power wheelchair, he goes down that street. And he's actually, I, his mother came by the other day when I was doing this and she says the biggest fear she has is him getting hit on that street going down there. And the same thing on Cherry Glen. I, my, uh, my kids live over there, my son and daughter-in-law, and they have little kids, you know. And that's, they, they go down that street the same way. They use that as a bypass to bypass Twin Oaks and they fly down there sometimes, you know, it's unbelievable. Uh, Bob is here tonight to speak about that. He lives on that street. And, uh, all I can say is, uh, speed bumps I don't like, but I don't know of any other way that this is gonna get corrected because we've had, the police came out and they put up the sign with the speed, uh, numbers and as people drive by, but it really didn't do anything. They, actually, they put the sign up backwards for some reason and so it was facing the wrong direction. And then the batteries went dead on it after three days and so, nothing happened out of that because I think that's what they did in, in regards to a letter that I had turned in, uh, maybe a year ago or so. And, you know, it's just, uh, some of the things that have happened. Backing out of my driveway here a couple of weeks ago, I back out, my car stalled in the middle of the street. I'm thinking, oh, this guy is going to see me and he's gonna stop. Well, he just came right on down, full blast, probably thirty, forty miles an hour, swung out into the gravel and never even slowed down. I mean, there could've been somebody walk out from behind the car, uh, and he'd have killed him, you know? And they blow all the stop signs. There's three stop signs and they just, they'll come down that hill and they'll blow all three of them and the other traffic going the other way, bear, they, they blow the stop signs too. And, uh, today, when I went up and I was gathering these signatures, people were chasing me down to get the, they wanted to sign it because they're, they said exactly the same thing. Somebody's going to die, is what they said. And I said, you're, that's what I think too and that's why I came here tonight. So.
Well, thank you, Mel, for your comments.
About all I had to say on it and I think that, uh, maybe Bob or, uh, Sue?
I've got, uh, Robert Baker down as the speaker, if I could call him up. Thanks, Mel.
Mr. Mayor and City Councilman, good evening.
How are you?
I'm Bob Baker. I'm the mayor of Cherry Glen Avenue. Yeah, I'm here for the same reason, the speed bumps on Cherry Glen, it's getting bad over there. We have people trying to pass us because we're going to speed limit and they want to beat that traffic light at Twin Oaks. So, we really need something done over there. Yeah, if you guys think about it, be nice to have it. That's about all I gotta say. And should I give this list with all the signatures to the secretary?
Yeah, go ahead and give it to Ms. Van. And I'll have, uh, someone from staff contact you guys too. Okay, I've got your information.
Okay.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Next, I have Jay Williams. Hi, Jay.
Uh, yeah, my name's Jay Williams. I'm a resident of, uh, Citrus Heights here. And, uh, the reason I'm here is, um, my, uh, I, I just want to talk about rent control. Uh, I talked to Mr. Fox on the phone and, uh, I really didn't get too much of an answer, but I just want to know each of the members, um, that says yes or no on rent control for this area here because it's outrageous. So, we start at Mr. Daniel.
Actually, this is public comment, so this is your time to speak. It's, it's not on the agenda, we can't really talk about it.
No, the, the reason is, I, I contacted the city manager's office.
Uh-huh.
Uh, left messages for the city council, mayor, to contact me and, and let me know, but that's been about a few weeks and, uh, I have received no contact. So, I, I do have a lot of campaign literature in my mailbox about, uh, from the members wanting, wanting my vote. So, I just want to find out, you know, what's your opinion on this because I, my rent has gone up and they only allowed me a renewal of six months. So, it used to be a year, but now it's, it's, uh, only for six months and right now it's eleven percent for six months. And, uh, when I renew it again, it'll be another eleven percent. This is what they told me. So, um, you know, you're here, you're having people come in about businesses in Citrus Heights, but there's nowhere for people to live. See, if you find or, uh, attract developers here to come in here and put apartments, and I know you've mentioned, uh, Ms. Bruins, you mentioned about the, um, uh, housing or something that you're, some type of Realtor Association?
Oh, I, I spoke at a real estate brokers association meeting.
Well, hopefully, next time you speak to them, you let them know that Citrus Heights have no, um, rental apartments, uh, that are affordable, okay? They're going up and, uh, I'm talking about people who are on the border of being homeless, okay? And it seems like nobody's interested in that. Uh, you know, everybody's, wanna ignore the problem. I mean, I hear everything about Christmas and Halloween and all that other stuff, but I just want the people sitting on this, um, you know, city council to represent the people because there's a lot of people lives in Citrus Heights that live in apartments, okay? And, uh, I don't think that's being addressed by anybody here on, on the city council. Seems like, uh, it's something you don't want to talk about or you want to ignore, one or the other. See? But, uh, there's a lot of people, uh, like this one where I live at, this guy's part-owner of the Sacramento Kings, okay? And, uh, he, he's, uh, you know, just, he, he's got ten apartments in this area, apartment complexes, okay? So, he lives and he works down in the Bay Area, down in, uh, Santa Clara. So, he's been, uh, having his people come up here and, uh, collect rent from people and, uh, he doesn't even live up here. He just, he's, uh, investors, JMK Investors. I don't know if any of, if he donated to any of the city council members here for elections or whatever, but, uh, uh, that's, it's kinda outrageous. I'm a veteran, okay? I served five years in the Air Force and seven years in the California International Guard. And, uh, I have law enforcement experience. Uh, I'm retired now, but it's just kind of outrageous that nobody's doing anything about it. And, uh, you know, it's not good, you know? So, uh, I just want to, uh, see if, you know, coming up, you can put that on your agenda or put some advertisement out for people to come in here and speak about it, okay? Because, uh, it's, I think it's a very important issue, okay? And, uh, another thing is, I don't know what you use your money for, but the streets in Citrus Heights needs to be resurfaced, okay? A lot of them, I know DAV fees, uh, taxpayer fees, all that stuff comes into a pot and, uh, you're supposed to use it or address whatever, you know, comes in. You're supposed to take care of it. Because I go over to, uh, I go over to, uh, not Rockland, what's it, Roseville. I go over to Roseville. I enjoy riding down their street because they put their money in the streets. Here in Citrus Heights, you know, it's just like going down Baja Mexico, you know, with the-
I hear you.
-all the holes and potholes and everything like that. And these people pay their money, so, you know, give them, give them what they pay for.
Thank you for your comments, Jay.
All right.
And I just, you brought to my attention, I got an email yesterday and I owe you a phone call, so I'll give you a call tomorrow.
Okay, appreciate it.
All right, thank you for your comments.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, that's all I have under, uh, public comment. Uh, I do have speakers for item nine and ten. I'm gonna hold those to the item unless anyone else wants to speak. We will move on to the next item.
The next item is consent calendar and we just have one item number six.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion and second for the consent calendar. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? The consent calendar passes. Next item, please.
Next item is a limited public hearing. The item seven, the subject is a resolution determining that the public interest and necessity require the acquisition of certain real property interest for the Auburn Boulevard Complete Streets Revitalization Phase Two project. The recommendation is to adopt the resolution determining the public interest and necessity to require certain property interest, uh, directing the filing of eminent domain proceedings for the Auburn Boulevard Complete Streets Revitalization Project Phase Two.
Thanks, Amy. And, uh, we'll begin with staff's report on this item. Following the report, I'll open the limited public hearing. The reason why it's called a limited public hearing is it's just open to the respective property owners that are, uh, being discussed with this item. So, with that, please, Gabe.
Thank you, Mayor and Councilmembers. Regina Cave, General Services Department. Uh, this item before you is in regards to our Auburn Boulevard Phase Two. Uh, in order for the city to proceed with, uh, final design and with eventual construction of Auburn Boulevard Phase Two, which extends from Rush Park to the north city limits, we must secure all necessary right-of-way and in order to do so, uh, we have received council's approval a little over a year ago to proceed with negotiations, offers and negotiations. And in some situations, we come to, um, kind of an impasse or other situations arise where we are not able to close with a property owner. In this case, uh, we are seeking to acquire via eminent domain and in order to do so, we must, um, receive council's, uh, concurrence that the public interest and necessity require these, uh, this acquisition.
Thank you. Any questions before I open the public hearing? With that, I'll open the public hearing and if the property owner's here, please come forward and see no one rushing the, uh, microphone. I will close the hearing and ask if there's any additional comments or questions or motions. No questions and comments? I'll take a motion then.
So, move.
I move, I second approval. I second the motion.
Okay, there's a motion to-
Approve.
-approve this item. Uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? The motion carries. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, next, we move into public hearings.
Public hearing number eight. The subject is the second reading of an ordinance amending the municipal code relating to fire prevention and protection. And the recommendation is to adopt the ordinance amending chapter thirty-eight of the municipal code relating to fire prevention and protection.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the council. Greg Anderson, Chief Building Official. On October eleventh, the council introduced, uh, an ordinance amending chapter thirty-eight, uh, article two of the Citrus Heights Municipal Code. This is pertaining to, uh, fire prevention and protection. The ordinance, um, the ordinance amending chapter thirty-eight, article two of Citrus Heights Municipal Code, um, amends the two thousand and sixteen California Fire Code. Staff recommends that council open and close public hearing and approve ordinance number two thousand eighteen zero zero six and ordinance of the Citrus Heights amending chapter thirty-eight of the Citrus Heights Code relating to fire protection and prevention.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Any questions?
Just a quick question. So, as a reminder, for me, this is to get the local code up to the state code or the-
It's local amendments to the state code.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, it is a public hearing, so I'm gonna open it, see if anybody runs up to the podium. And not see anyone, I'm gonna close the public hearing and ask for a, uh, motion or any final comments.
Move approval.
Second.
There's a motion and second to approve the item. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thanks, Greg.
The next item is items nine A and nine B, which is, the subject is the rental housing inspection program.
Good evening, Mayor and City Councilmembers. My name's Dave Gutierrez and I'm a lieutenant with the Citrus Heights Police Department and I manage our special operations unit, which also includes, uh, code enforcement. Here to, uh, talk to you about introducing our city ordinance, uh, for the implementation of a rental housing inspection program. Back on August ninth, uh, we presented research data and proposed rental housing inspection program. Uh, city council authorized the city manager to direct staff to proceed with creating a city ordinance and fee schedule for the proposed program. city ordinance and fee schedule for the proposed program. Back in two thousand and seventeen, there was a community survey done. At that time, ninety-one percent of residents surveyed thought the overall appearance of the city is important. Ninety-three percent of residents surveyed think that keeping neighborhoods clean is the third most important issue facing the city, right behind public safety. And ninety-three percent of residents surveyed field neighborhoods have declined and increased over a two thousand and twelve survey when seventy-seven residents felt that way. So what I'm going to do is present updates that have occurred since the last city council meeting. Staff has met with the California Apartment Association and the Sacramento Association of Realtors again to obtain additional input. Based on those meetings and several conversations, staff considered and made modifications to the original proposal that we made on August ninth. We also have met with Metro Fire to review our proposed inspection checklist, and they support the program and look forward to a partnership with our, with our inspectors. We also attended all ten neighborhood association meetings, and at all of those meetings, attendees were positive about the program and were generally in favor of the creation of the program. Two common questions that I received throughout meeting those neighborhood association attendees, as well as talking with folks in the community, will the cost be passed along to the tenants? And what if the violations were caused by the tenant? So I do have information in this presentation that will speak to the cost. Ultimately, we can't prevent this cost of the program from being passed on to the tenants. But as you'll see, the monthly increase, if they were to have their rent increase, is fairly nominal, and I'll represent that in just a little bit. And then to the point of violations being caused by the tenant, that certainly is a possibility. We've done some research. We did talk with the Apartment Association. We talked with other regional jurisdictions that have programs already implemented. And essentially, the best practice is to deal with the property owners. They have the best tools to get tenants to fix the issues. This isn't something where the inspectors would look to be punitive towards the property owners if they're having challenges working with the tenants. We would look to mediate those situations. And as long as there's open dialogue and progress, we would work with the property owners to help them come to a long-term solution. So the modifications that I represented, in the first proposal, we had proposed that self-certification would only be allowed for apartment or rental properties that had more than fifteen, so sixteen or more. As a result of the meetings and the suggestions, we are now proposing the ordinance, it's written this way, to allow self-certification for all rental properties, including single-family homes. And then the annual registration fee bill will now be, is proposed on a tier structure base, based on the size of the property. The original proposal was a ninety-five dollar a year registration fee, no matter the size, single-family or well over a hundred units. We have now created a tier fee structure for the registration fee, and I can, I'll represent that here in just a moment. So the applicability of the program, this is going to apply to the interior and exterior of any single-family or multifamily residence that is being rented or is intended to be rented. So in relation to the proposed fee schedule, some of the fee considerations that we took into consideration were logistical and administrative needs of the program, inspector's salary and benefits, along with vehicle maintenance and fuel costs, the size of the property, and desire to encourage compliance and recoup city costs. Our housing stock fee schedule currently, rental property owners pay twelve dollars per door, per year. The increases for this program for a property with, and I apologize off to modify this because I just realized this is actually backwards, but, so for properties with a hundred or more units, that will be five dollars increase annually for a total of seventeen dollars. A property with five to ninety-nine units, that is the eight dollar annual increase for a total of twenty dollars. But for a unit with one to four units, that's a fifteen dollar increase for a total of twenty-seven dollars. So the one hundred unit property representation down here and the one to four unit property, they're just reversed there. The annual registration fee, we have decided, again, based on a tier structure, sixty-five dollars annually for a single-family unit, so that number for a single-family unit came down thirty dollars annually, a hundred and five dollar annually for properties with two to four units, and a hundred and forty dollars annually for properties with more than five units. We also included in our fee schedule have a four hundred and seventy dollar reinspection fee. That is only applicable if a unit upon the original inspection fails for violations, and then we come back to do the reinspection and those violations have not been corrected. If the violations have been corrected, that fee would not be imposed. There's a hundred dollar rescheduling fee, and then approximately two percent per month late payment penalty fee included in the fee schedule. So here's where the monthly breakdown of the fee. So if the property owner decided to pass along the cost of this program to the tenant, this is what it would look like per month for the tenant. So for a single unit, it would be six dollars and sixty-six cents per month. For a two-unit property or duplex would be five dollars and sixty-four cents a month increase. For a fourplex, quadplex or four-unit, it would be three dollars and forty-four cents a month. And then for a one hundred unit complex, it would be fifty-three cents. And the larger the property, the more that, that cost would come down. So if their rent increased by more than these numbers here, they could not associate it to the, to the rental housing inspection program. Fee collection, the program registration forms will be mailed out in January of two thousand and nineteen, and the housing stock fees will be updated with Cubs in January of nineteen. So recently, in speaking with Cubs, the consolidated utility billing system with the county, which is who collects our current housing stock fee, we learned that they're also going to be able to collect our registration fees, which I think will be a benefit to the property owners because they won't have to make two payments. It'll just be all-inclusive in that bill. But as a result of that, if I can draw your attention to the agenda packet, page sixty-three, we, both of these are going to be on a calendar year basis. And because although we're not going to start inspections until July first, the city is going to start incurring costs as of January one for hiring staff, administrative needs, technical needs and vehicle needs and such. So at the bottom of the agenda packet, page three, we would modify that last, on the bottom fee, new fee collection flow chart, that last tab there where it says housing stock fees collected for calendar year, and then it says the new housing stock fee will be billed at half of the current rate and half of the proposed new rate. It's going to be collected for the, the full rate of the two thousand and nineteen calendar year. So it won't be for two thousand and twenty full rate. It will start the full rate in two thousand and nineteen. And then in the ordinance, the agenda packet is page sixty-eight, section five zero dash two forty-six, under fees established subsection A. This currently says annual registration fee, the city will bill an annual registration fee by calendar year with the first year of the program prorated. We're going to redact with the first year of the program prorated. That, the first year will not be prorated. It'll be for the calendar year of two thousand and nineteen. Rental housing inspection program staffing will have three code enforcement officers with specialized training and two program assistants. Now to speak to more of the ordinance here, so our inspection plan is going to be a three-year inspection cycle. One hundred percent of all rental properties will be inspected on the exterior. We'll inspect interiors of all rental properties, so a hundred percent of those properties that have fewer than sixteen units. We're going to inspect a minimum of five percent of units at rental properties with more than fifteen units. Inspect interior of all rental units when code enforcement receives a complaint, and then there is no inspection fee. The cost of this program is covered by the fee, so we don't have an inspection fee, an additional fee. Our rental housing inspection program plan, tenants have the right to refuse an inspection unless reasonable cause to believe a substandard living condition exists or there are exigent circumstances. If a property owner refuses an inspection but the tenant desires an inspection, the program will inspect the unit. And then I referenced some case law that supports that, Griffith versus City of Santa Cruz. Registration requirements, it would be unlawful for our ordinance to rent if not registered with the rental housing inspection program. The owner must complete a registration form, and that registration is valid for one year unless the owner fails to provide updated information with thirty days, within thirty days of such change. The exemptions to the program will be newly constructed buildings within five years, rental units subject to routine inspection by another government agency. However, inspectors in the program would conduct an inspection if they become aware of a substandard living condition at an exempt location. Notification, the plan is to provide thirty days notice to tenant and the property owner. The standard around the region is fourteen days notice, but we're going to give thirty days notice to ensure they have plenty of notification of the impending inspection. And we're also going to include the checklist in that packet so that the property owner and the tenant is well aware of exactly what we're going to be looking for. We don't want them to have any, any surprises. The checklist, both for the exterior and the interior, will be included. The rescheduling fee, that fee will only be billed if the property owner does not give at least seven days notice of the cancellation. Violations will be described in writing. We'll provide twenty-four hours to a hundred and twenty days to give, given to correct a violation. That really is just dependent upon the severity of that violation and what timeframe we think is reasonable to, to correct those violations. Notice of results will be delivered within ten days. Reinspections will be conducted to ensure violations are corrected. If violations are not corrected, that's when that reinspection fee would be billed. And that's to encourage compliance. Self-certification component of the program pertains now to all rental properties. If the property passes the initial inspection and the owner has no prior code violations within five years, they're eligible for the program. They'll be required to self-certify their units every three years, just as our three-year cycle will be. Self-certified locations must keep all associated paperwork for a period of six years, that's two inspection cycles. And then ten percent of self-certified properties will be randomly inspected annually by our, our inspectors. And there also will be a requirement to take an educational class every five years related to conducting effective property inspections. Currently, the California Apartment Association does provide that training that would satisfy that requirement, but as long as there's, there's an equivalent type of training that's approved by, by the director, we would allow for that to suffice. So the timeline, the second, if it passes tonight, then the second reading of the ordinance would be on November eighth. The ordinance would become effective on January first of two thousand and nineteen. Staff hiring, system modifications, program testing and training would occur between January and June of two thousand and nineteen. And then our first inspection would occur July first of two thousand and nineteen. So I wanted to talk about some benefits. This program is going to allow our existing code enforcement staff to focus on non-investment residential properties. Having a rental property is essentially a business and it's an investment. Increase current code enforcement staff ability to be proactive. Currently, we have very limited ability to be proactive on any properties, including businesses, ninety-five percent reactionary. This would have similar regulatory requirements on investment properties as a traditional business, such as a business license or a special use permit would have for a business. Decrease blight, improve quality of life in neighborhoods, increase property values, and improve safety and risk management for, for property owners. So before I review this slide here, I wanted to just introduce Greg Anderson, which you guys all met just a few moments ago, to talk about the partnership between the Building Division and the rental housing inspection program.
Yeah, I just wanted to contribute to this, that, you know, Building Department and code enforcement work collaboratively, hand in hand with these rental properties. We have quite a few multifamily dwellings within our city, and the majority of them are, are twenty to thirty years old, were built in the seventies. And if they haven't had regular routine maintenance, they're in dire need of, of maintenance. One of the things I wanted to, to contribute was, what the Building Department gets called out on quite a bit with these multifamily dwellings is failures with elevated elements, being decks, balconies, stairways, stair treads that are broken and people are tripping and falling, balcony railings that are, that are damaged and rotten and people are falling, people are falling through their decks. We're all aware of the episode we had back in Berkeley where we had a lot of folks that were injured and a fatality from a collapsing deck. There's a lot of movement in the legislation right now for the Building Standards Commission to adopt certain programs to go out and, and increase the safety and the structural stability of these elevated elements within our cities to protect our citizens and, and make these, these elements safer. A lot of these items with the decks and the elevated elements, most of them, when they get to that point where they're unsafe, are very visible from the ground. And the regular inspection of these multifamily dwellings would definitely bring that to our attention to where we could notify the property owners that there's a problem and there's an issue. I've had a couple in the, in the past few years where we've actually had to post the buildings and barricade the access to the decks and balconies because they were in such bad shape that they were a danger. I could not allow the tenants to occupy or use the decks until they're repaired. They're currently being repaired at this time, but, you know, we, we don't have the ability to, to run around and inspect every single unit, you know, floor by floor with the limited staff that we have and the time that we have. So I think this is a great program. In addition to that, we look at a lot of exterior problems with these units. I make contact with a lot of tenants throughout the city. And, you know, for the most part, there is a lot of issues inside these, these dwellings and these apartments that we don't know about. Most of the tenants are afraid to call the city and file a complaint for retaliation. A lot of the buildings that we have that have the, the dry rot damage and the, and elevated elements that are dry rotted and, and to an extent that it's causing water intrusion. The water intrusion in turn causes moisture problems inside the house or inside the apartments, and we have mold issues. And that's a big, big issue, has been for years, fighting these mold issues within these apartments. So I think this is a great program. It's going to create a more healthier and safer environment for our citizens to, to live and, and rent these, these units within our city.
So staff recommendation, staff recommends the city council introduce, read by title only, and waive the first full reading of ordinance number two thousand and eighteen. That number hasn't been created yet. An ordinance of the City of Citrus Heights to establish a rental housing inspection program. Staff also recommends the city council adopt resolution number two thousand and eighteen, a resolution of the city council of the City of Citrus Heights, California adopting a fee schedule for the rental housing inspection program.
Thank you. Before I open the, thank you, Lieutenant. Before I open the public hearing, are there some quick questions of staff or can we hold them till after?
I have a question, but.
Go ahead.
You can wait till afterwards.
Okay. Well, then I will open the public hearing. And I do have some speakers. First is Diana. And Diana will be followed by Jim, excuse me, Jim Lofgren.
Hi, my name is Diana Beals. I just want to say a couple of things. Hopefully it'll be short. One, I'm just wondering how you can raise the, the code enforcement fees when only a quarter of the calls are for rental properties? Two, are these, these inspections, I don't know what they're covering. There hasn't been a list of exactly what all they're covering. I know you've said dry rot, I mean, anyway. So I'm concerned about that because as with me, and I'm sure all of you, you've had termite inspectors come. Now, on their whims, depending on who it is, they can call all sorts of things. And that's a very, you know, legitimate concern, I think, because I think you guys have all been there too. And the other thing is, you know, if you've got a nice piece of property and it's a rental property, you have to be, and you're next to a house that is not being kept up. property, you have to be, and you're next to a house that is not being kept up, that doesn't seem fair either. And as far as opting out, I would, I would think, as being a landlord, that more of my tenants that would opt out is because of the way they're keeping the property. And I can't really do anything myself. I can't say, you know, pick up this, clean that, you're, you know. So, you know, I think that every place should be inspected whether or not, if you're going to do this, whether or not, you know, the person wants it or not. The other thing is, I wasn't even going to bring this up, but just because of the last man, you know, mentioned about how high his rents are going, and I agree with that, they are going high. But my, I went and looked at my fees for water, sewer, garbage, insurance, and taxes. And my fees actually went up sixty-one dollars per unit, per year this last year. I mean, that's a lot of money. And now you guys are adding another ten dollars on it between these two fees. So, I mean, it's getting very expensive for the landlord, and the fees to repair things are going sky high. You used to be able to get a water heater for a hundred and fifty dollars, now you're paying a thousand dollars with all the fees and replacement. So costs are really going up high. And for those that have an individual house or duplex, or anything that's on a single letter, level, you know, you've got the yard upkeep, you've got the roof upkeep, you've got a lot more than apartments have. So I think that, you know, I think that the smaller owner is getting more penalized because I don't know, as far as the enforcement, what are they going to say about the yard if the tenant's not keeping care of the yard? And I'm constantly on my people about the yards, but I can only do so much too. And then the person next door doesn't do anything about his yard, you know, what can I do? So that's all, thank you.
Thanks, Diana. Did you want to address any of that?
Yeah, so I think to her last point there, I mean, that's exactly what we want this program to do. We want to equally work for the property owners and as well as the tenants. And if there are those issues at those locations, such as landscaping or cars parked on a yard, we will help that property owner rectify those situations by virtue of having this program and being able to proactively address these issues. And so we truly believe that this program will enhance quality of life and, you know, raise property values and do all those things. And this program will allow, as mentioned before, for our current code enforcement staff to focus on everything non-rental. And that really is a concern in the community when it comes to code enforcement, when you attend neighborhood meetings or talk in the community, they would like code enforcement to be able to do more. And we think, you know, this absolutely will make that happen and will make tremendous progress and remove blight and improve property values and just quality of life in our neighborhoods.
Okay, next speaker is Jim Lofgren. And Jim will be followed by Robert Kirby.
Good evening, I'm Jim Lofgren, the Senior Vice President for the California Apartment Association. As you know, I spoke to the council the last time this issue came up and voiced a lot of concerns, some of the concerns that were expressed by the prior speaker. I do want to say that I appreciate the opportunity to meet with your staff, Lieutenant Gutierrez and members of the council. I think this is an aggressive program, there is a cost associated with it, but I think what the challenge facing your city here is that you do have some older properties and you're wanting to do something about it and ensure the safety of your residents. And especially in a period where they are paying higher rents, they want to make sure that they're getting value for their property. There are a lot of good owners out there that hopefully when you do the inspections, you'll find that they are in good condition. And I appreciate the fact that you've now modified the ordinance to allow self-certification for the owners with one to fifteen units. So if they've done a good job and passed the inspection, they can go into the self-certification program. I also was concerned about the high cost for the program for owners of a single property, and I appreciate that there has been an adjustment made. I think that we want to collect a lot of statistics, I think there's a willingness to look at the program, maybe on an annual basis, to see what percentage of the properties really are having problems, and maybe some, make some adjustments to the program. It's pretty aggressive, you're doing inspections in a three-year cycle, which does increase the cost, but I think there's a willingness to maybe look at the program afterwards and see if some adjustments in the program can be made, and some of the costs may be reduced, and then there could be some relief to the owners and then possibly trickle down relief to the renters. So appreciate the participation in the program and this discussion and the development of the ordinance, and we'll work closely with you in its implementation to ensure that it's the most successful program in the region. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lofgren. Robert Kirby. And Mr. Kirby is followed by Kalen Wright.
My name is Bob Kirby, lived in Citrus Heights for about forty-plus years, had two homes here. We also have a rental home in Rancho Cordova. And I sort of brought this initiative up at one of the meetings one night. And this housing inspection that people are concerned about is good for all sides. It's good for the rentor and the rentee. It protects both, it, they're able to keep the properties, excuse me, in better shape. The fee is not that much, if you think about it. And it also affects the property owners around. If your rental properties are in better condition, then your property values go up. If your rental properties around you aren't in good condition, it affects your property values. So it's a win for everybody, and it's something that has worked. I objected to, when I first got into it, refers to our properties in Rancho Cordova, but it has worked very, very well. The renters are all into it, and it just takes care of so many things as a renter, as an owner, that you don't have to address, that the city helps you with. So it's very beneficial, very, very beneficial. So it's, you know, on both sides of the coin, everybody wins, really do. So I know there's concerns, as the lady previous brought about the inspection, but you get the inspection list prior to it, you have a chance to look at it, there are safety issues in there that should be taken care of by either the rentor or the owner, whatever it may be. So it just works out well for everybody, and that's about all I can say, so. And, you know, in the city, we have seen, and I've been here a long time, long before it was a city, but we have seen that the city has done some really good things, but unfortunately, we haven't addressed this issue. And when you drive down the street, you can almost pick out the properties that are rented and are owned. And that doesn't go in all cases, but the majority. So I just think it's a very, very good program. And I'd like to thank Lieutenant Gutierrez because he has done an outstanding job on it, so, that's all I got.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Kalen Wright.
Good evening, Council, I'm Kalen Wright, representing the Sacramento Association of Realtors. We represent about seven thousand Realtors throughout Sacramento County. Here tonight in support of the Rental Housing Inspection Ordinance, when this came before you as a draft in August, we did have some concerns. We felt that, in a lot of ways, it unduly burdened the single family, the people I represent mostly, represent buyers who are purchasing the units that are between one and four, and with not, with the first fee structure and with not allowing for self-certification, we did have some concerns. But Lieutenant Gutierrez was wonderful to work with. He and his staff were extremely responsive, we enjoyed working with him, and we are supportive of this final version. We think it will do good things for the rental housing stock in Citrus Heights. The other programs throughout the Sacramento region have worked well to improve quality housing in the city and county of Sacramento, as well as Rancho Cordova. So strongly supportive of the ordinance and look forward to continue working with Lieutenant Gutierrez as the program moves forward. Thank you.
Thanks, yeah. Okay, that's all the speaker sheets I have, this is a public hearing, if anybody, yes, sir. Could you, if you want to speak, and then I'd just ask you to fill out a, if you would, fill out a card afterwards and give it to the clerk. Thank you.
My name's Steve.
Come on.
Steve Beals, my wife spoke earlier, she raised some concerns. One of them was the code enforcement issues that come up before the county or the city. I'm wondering how many of them relate to rental property compared to individual homes owned? Do you have any numbers on that?
Yes, sir. So currently, approximately on average, every year, about thirty percent of our code enforcement calls for service are attributed to rental properties. However, it's important to know that that is based off of primarily completely reactive program. We, in our research and speaking to other jurisdictions that implement these programs, we know that once this proactive type program is implemented, they go out and ultimately find many more rental properties that are experiencing violations and people are living in substandard conditions just by virtue of going out and doing the proactive inspections. We also know that, you know, some of these tenants, we, I'll use the word vulnerable for many reasons, one, they're fearful of eviction, so they don't call, they're fearful of rent increases, so they don't call, English could be a second language, they may not even know what their rights are as a tenant, and this program is going to ensure that upfront, they have those rights, they're going to be educated through our program, and we're going to work to help them through that. That thirty percent number did not include, in my initial proposal, it also did not include numbers that the Building Division works on. As Greg was mentioning recent, just a little bit ago, he's, his division has been working with three large apartment complexes that all had violations in them. Two of them have corrected them, and we're still, they're still working with the balconies at a third. So that's in addition to what code enforcement has been handling too. So we know the problem is larger than just that thirty percent, but those numbers are based off a reactionary program, not a, so complaint-driven, not a proactive program.
So thirty, thirty percent are from rental properties?
And let me, let me ask you to address your comments to the council, and if you have questions, what I'm going to do is let you have your time to speak, and then I'll ask.
Yeah, well, my concern, first of all, my question is, are property owners who are not landlords, are they involved in this program?
Hold on, is that your final question, are you done?
Yeah, pretty much.
Okay, thank you. Then now.
Did I get an answer?
Now, now I'm going to ask for an answer.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir. This program is applicable to any single-family or multifamily property that is being rented or is intended to be rented.
Anyone else wishing? Excuse me, excuse me.
Are you, do you mind if I just?
Sure, come back to the mic so we can get this on the record.
Sure. You know, the deal is, we're landlords, and we try to be fair, we try to be reasonable, we try to be responsible citizens in the community. Here we have a program, looks to me like we're getting assessed for some things that may need to be done. And you started out by saying that, you know, you were trying to do some community improvement because there'd been some deterioration. A lot of the code enforcement issues that come your way don't involve rental property, they involve all kinds of properties. I'm wondering how much of that cost is being assumed by homeowners to manage your program, help you with your program? That's my question.
Okay.
Fair enough?
Fair enough.
Okay, thank you.
Is there anybody else wishing to speak under the public hearing? If not, I'll close the public hearing. And Dave, if you wouldn't mind answering that.
Yeah, I think I answered most of it just a moment ago. The homeowner is, if he's referencing a homeowner of a rental property, so a property owner, yes, they are involved for an owner-occupied home in the city, that will not be applicable, this program would not include those homes. But our current code enforcement staff will work on those properties, and by virtue of having this property, or I'm sorry, this program, the inspectors will be dealing with all the investment-type properties, the rental properties, and our code enforcement staff currently will be able to do much more in the community, having not to deal with the investment-type for-profit homes in the, in the community.
Okay, thanks. With that, I'm sure there's questions in the council? Who wants to go first? Mr. Daniel?
Sure, why not? Get it out of the way. Thank you for the presentation. I think in the future, though, it also would be helpful, if we're going to have the PowerPoint, which I thought was really good, if we could get a copy of something like that beforehand, or even just page numbers, because we were moving along so quickly there, and the questions started building up in my head, and building up, and building up, and then they all just meshed together. So I'm going to try to go back and remember some of the points, but thank you for the presentation. I didn't see anything when you mentioned the two thousand and seventeen community survey that said people were just clamoring for a rental inspection type of unit. Is that correct?
You did not see that.
Okay. And then, so I'm really not sure how we got here. I really don't understand why we're here today. There's really been no public outcry. The numbers, I don't want to go over the numbers yet. What I do want to ask is, what somebody did ask, is can we share with the public at this point what the inspection is? What are we going to inspect? Are we going to approve an inspection program tonight, not knowing what we're going to inspect?
Sure.
So are you able to share that for us?
Yes, sir. So we're going to inspect hot, cold, running water, electrical power, heat, sewage disposal systems, entry doors, vector infestation, erodent, harborage, mechanical issues, carbon monoxide detector, air conditioning units, thermostats, smoke detectors, venting systems, appliances, making sure they're all functioning properly. Electrical, no splice wiring, no exposed wiring, all outlets and switches plates must have appropriate coverings, electrical panel must be labeled, GFCI outlets must function and installed in bathrooms, kitchens, exterior and garage. Plumbing has to do with sinks secured to walls, water heaters are installed in approved location with seismic strapping, operate temperature relief valve and drain line, venting at a minimum of a hundred degrees water temperature, counters and sink surfaces, windows, flooring, foundation, subflooring, making sure when we're walking in there, things aren't flexing and moving around, doing those kinds of things. Walls and ceilings on the exterior, things will be storage of junk and rubbish, overgrown vegetation, dumpsters and trash cans, inoperable, unregistered vehicles, foundation vent screens, call space covers, roof and ceiling issues, if we're seeing deteriorated roofs, deteriorating siding, stairways, includes landing treads, risers, balusters and railings, and we're going to be working with the Building Division on that closely. Exterior lighting, fire extinguishers for multifamily only, infestation of vectors and rodents on the exterior, as well as the interior, electrical gas meters for multifamily only, electrical panel on the outside, make sure they're property labeled, exterior walkways, make sure there's no major trip hazards, things like that. And then water heaters, because sometimes those are on the outside of the building. That's just a, you know, a brief overview.
Brief? No, it sounds like a very extensive, a survey, it really does. And I mean, that's good, if they're going to be paying for something, it's going to be a very extensive, sounds like it could come up with a lot of issues, though, too. And I have concern, as some other folks have expressed, that with those things and the, what might come down to some subjective opinions about what's good and what's not so good, and what's acceptable and what's not acceptable. We had the gentleman earlier tonight talking about the issue of rent control and how difficult it is to, you know, for people to pay their rents today, and they're going up, and they're going up. There's just no doubt, I think, that that's going to be one of the unintended consequences. I think there's a lot of really good, positive things that can come out of this program, absolutely, but I think there's also some unintended consequences that are concerning, and I don't know that we're needing to come in and do that at this point, not hearing that outcry. I wanted to talk about the opt-out survey. I understand that the owner can opt out, the tenant can opt out, the owner cannot opt out if the tenant does not want to opt out, correct?
Port, the tenant can refuse the inspection, and so long as the inspectors don't have reasonable cause to believe that a substandard living condition or exigent circumstances exist, we'll write that up as a refusal. But really, the decision to inspect is solely from the tenant. So, I mean, if a property owner declines the inspection, but the tenant wants the inspection, we're going to make, do the inspection.
It would seem unusual, but what about the reverse? What if the property owner wants the inspection to occur, and the tenant says, I don't want you coming into my home?
Well, then they have tools to help with that. And if I were a property owner and my tenant didn't want the, my investment property inspected, I would probably move to help with that, and they have tools such as three-day perform or quits, or ultimately an eviction, which we don't want to see. So our main role in a situation like that, by the way, in our research, we have not found that scenario. I guess anything's possible, but we have not encountered that scenario being described. But we would work to mediate that and figure out how we can best work on behalf of both entities.
Well, so I think I heard the answer is, basically, they won't be able to. If the tenant does not want us, the government, to come into their home, they're not going to be able to refuse if the owner says, well, it's my property, so I want it inspected.
Well, the unit is not going to force their way into a home, that's not going to happen. But if we do have information that suggests there are substandard living conditions or exigent circumstances, we have the ability to author an administrative warrant that can be signed by a judge to then go in and do that. That would be the absolute last. be signed by a judge to then go in and do that, that would be the absolute last resort, and again, tho, in, in all the research that we've conducted, and all the jurisdictions that we spoke to that currently have these programs, which are very successful, that, that just doesn't happen.
And, and I would think it's unusual, but from what I heard, you just say now, absent some other reason to move forward, you would honor then the, the tenant's demand that we don't enter their home?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and then on the opt-out survey, excuse me, on the opt-out portion, I'm very happy to see that there is an opt-out portion in this now, any, any information on other entities that do a inspection program that have an opt-out feature, such as this feature, any information on that as to the percentage of people that opt out approximately, we have no way of knowing then whether 10% might opt out or 80% opt out?
Yeah, I don't have.
We have no way of knowing.
But, but it, it's very rare for that to happen, again, because this, this isn't a surprise inspection, we're giving notification in, in, in our research and talking with the different entities, such as the California Apartment Association, Sacramento Area Realtors, I mean, the tenants are, are in favor of programs like this because it protects their rights, and we also want to protect the property owner's rights.
Well, again, I think it's, there's a lot of good positives that can come out of it, but, you know, as Jim mentioned, it's, it's a pretty aggressive program, for one thing, and then, I believe maybe Greg mentioned, and forgive me if I got it wrong, but some issues with people who are afraid of some consequences, though, too, and so I, I think we're, we're missing the aspect of consideration of that, but as long as I have you saying to me right now that if a tenant wants to opt out, then we don't go in absent something, some other issue.
Yes, sir, that's correct.
I'm more comfortable with that aspect then, and then finally, we, yeah, we heard about this on, again, previously on August 9th, and some numbers were discussed then, and I think somebody brought these numbers up, but the numbers that I remember is 15,000 rental units, 1,300 complaints, approximately 25% involving rentals, which would be 325 rentals, that's 2.1% of the rentals are responsible or connected to the code enforcement complaints that we get now, so I'm wondering, what are we doing about the other 98% that we currently are associated with, and do we have the level of code, code enforcement to attack 98% when we're going to create this five-person unit or whatever to take care of 2%, which, even if we double it, let's call it 4% or triple it, call it 6%, it, it seems like the focus is missing, the, the focus is missing from where the problem is, and so I don't know, as a government entity, why we need to step up at this point and say, you know, we're here to protect you, we know that 2% of our code enforcement involves a rental unit, and so we're going to take care of you, so not a question of statement, so, thank you very much, that's it.
So I get different math than you, I don't know how you go from 25 or 30% down to 2%, but that, that's neither here nor there, Dave, I want to say to you that, you know, first of all, thank you for all the research that you've done, I've talked to other jurisdictions elected officials and folks that live in areas where they have this, and one of the things they explicitly told me is they, they had a similar, at least in my opinion, situation that we had, that they had blighted property, also quality of life issues and, and health and safety issues, people didn't want to come forward, by putting this program in place, a lot of things started getting done prior to the inspections, because quite frankly, people didn't want to be found not in compliance, I'm assuming you were, when you read all the list of things in terms of the checklist, I'm assuming that's going to be available to be posted on our website way before we get to inspections in July, i.e., I'm a landlord, I can pull it out, take a peek at it, and already know what's going to be looked at. I agree that, you know, I mean, I've been a landlord, and I'll be honest with you, these fees are very inexpensive compared to, I, I had rental property in Santa Barbara, I paid almost $500 a year for a very similar program, and they never came out to my house. I, I wasn't quite understanding why, who I was paying for what, but it was a total self-inspection program, but still, the threat was there, so you, make sure you take care of it, but we know every landlord is not a negligent landlord, but I'll cite a, you know, Sayonara, perfect example, Sayonara would have never become the problem that it became if we had something like this in place, those are all absentee landlords, they were, you know, they bought their properties a long time ago, didn't fix them up, collecting rent, didn't care how many people lived there, didn't care whether they fixed it because they were getting X amount of dollars a month profit, so, you know, when I looked, when we did our surveys, you know, several times, again, 93% of the people were saying, you know, that they've seen a deterioration of neighborhoods, and you can drive through a neighborhood and, and pick out the houses, and are all of them rentals? No, I, I will admit that, but the majority of them are, the majority of the ones that are not being kept up at rentals, not owner occupied, however, for those owner occupied houses that are not being taken care of, by putting this in place, knowing today our code enforcement is completely reactionary, i.e., somebody has to file a complaint, that will free them up to become more proactive, to go out and also, you know, follow up on the owner occupied properties who aren't taking care of their properties, because, because they're out there, too, I mean, I, I have one in my neighborhood, I'm not going to mention the name of my neighbor, but, you know, they, they need to do some work, but that's beside the point, so, I appreciate that, you know, you worked with both, you know, SAR and the apartment group, came to an understanding, you know, better understanding on that, this is not looked, in my opinion, I, I don't, I don't take lightly when we're talking about fees increasing or adding something that, you know, we haven't had before, I personally prefer less government intervention, but I have to tell you, they're not taking, you know, there's a good chunk of folks out there that aren't taking care of this today, absentee landlords, and we can't go in and pick and choose and say, you know what, you're going to pay the fee and you're not, it's, it's just unfortunate, but that's the way it is, but, you know, this does also go to fix health and safety issues that are out there, you know, and there, I, I know people who live with situation like this that won't come forward, not in Citrus Heights, but other where, other places, because they're afraid either, one, they're getting their rent raised, or two, getting kicked out, so this, in my opinion, helps, you know, Rancho Cordero implemented a, a program, little different, but, you know, similar, amazing how, how much their neighborhoods got cleaned up, and that's what they're hearing all across the city, so we have an aggressive program for the first three years, I'm the first one to say, I want to see, you know, annual, if not six-month reports back on this, because I know, just, you know, being around long enough, that we probably haven't got every little detail in here perfect, so there's going to be some we tweak, up or down, don't know what they are, but I fully expect to see an improvement at the end, you know, after we go through the first inspection, I, I certainly see that, you know, there's a, a possibility of backing off a little bit, but we need to get all the way through, I, I'm personally glad to see that we're going to do it aggressively, because it is a, a complaint that we hear out of the neighborhoods, you know, from, from lots of different people, and I guarantee you, by allowing the other code enforcement folks to tackle the owner occupied nuisances, if you will, as opposed to waiting for a complaint, you're going to start to see an improvement there, too, so I, I support it, I, I haven't seen the final numbers in terms of where it all works out, but I'm, but I'm okay on that, because I, I think at the end, it, it's an investment in our community.
I'll have to agree with Jeff, it's, it's very much something that I think that we look for in order for health and safety reasons for our community, it boasters the safety for our residents, it gives them some assurance, I know that the state is actively looking at putting some rules and regulations in out there that are going to impact us in the future, anyway, I think that the Berkeley issue that you raised, plus the, the one in Oakland has brought to the state level some very definite desires to put some things in action that forces local jurisdictions to do exactly what we're doing right now, and so I'd rather we get a jump on that, but in terms of, of the overall program, you did two things that I really like, and the very first one was, you have worked with the, the real estate folks, you've worked with the apartment house folks, and we now have a consensus of the, of those folks and the city on, this is a good program, one that is workable and one that meets the needs, and I will guarantee you that the, those folks will be hearing from both the owners and at times from what the owners are hearing from the occupants of these rental units, as to whether or not this works, and the other one I like is, is there is a definite dollar amount, and which can be maximum amount, which can be attributed to rental increases, so that we don't have somebody making a $15 to $25 a month increase on something when it should only be three or more, so, those are the things that I caught out of what you said this time, the changes and the, the responses to issues we had before, so I thank you for that.
Thank you. Jeanne?
Thank you, got a couple of questions. Do, I, I kind of focused or noticed the issue of registration, do we have a registration program in place now, or is this new part of the ordinance, is this a new component of the ordinance?
So there is no registration requirement, however, every property owner of a rental unit currently pays the housing stock fee through, through consolidated utility building system, they, systems in the county, so we know who they are, but there is currently no registration requirement.
Okay, so what is the registration requirement going to produce? Why have a registration requirement, when you already know who they are?
Well, we know, the, the data that we have, we were able to work with IT to figure out, you know, what a rental property is in our city, we also know who is paying through Cubs, but the registration form really provides us that, that detail that we need for that property, specifically who, who the contact will be, that's one of our specific challenges when it comes to dealing with rental properties, our absentee landlords, and there'll be a requirement for them to provide us, they, obviously, we'll have the property owner information, but if that person is not the one that's going to be coming to the property for the inspection, we'll have an alternate contact information, and it really is just a, a way of keeping track of these, these properties and, and being able to hold them accountable.
Okay, I guess what concerns me, I mean, I'm thinking if I were to buy a second property and move there and turn my present residence into a rental, then I would be required to register that, and if I didn't, and let's just say my, one of my children moved into it, you know, rented from me, and then if I didn't register it because I didn't know I had to register it, that I would be in violation, I'd be violating this ordinance, or the law, basically.
The technical answer is yes, but, but I assure you, the, the desire of the program is not to, you know, penalize people or, or impose fines or fees or violate, or have them violate the ordinance, if, if they're clearly unaware and we find out about that, and we have a conversation, and they register with the program, that, that really is going to be where that stops, now, I, I suppose if they refuse to, to register after having conversations and trying to get them to comply, then the ordinance would allow us to, to work through that.
Well, okay, if they acknowledge being the landlord, though, they're still going to be subject to all the, the fees, correct?
In rental properties, yes, ma'am.
In a rental property, okay, so how are you going to, what's, what's process going to be to capture all the current property owners who are unregistered, so to speak?
So we, we honestly believe that we have a, a very good idea, Mike Petnato put several hours in assisting us, looking through the geographic information system through the county to determine which properties, the property owner has a different address of record than the actual property itself, that's a very good indication, but, but the, the honest answer is, we may not know all of that, there, there could be a property out there that we're not aware of, but by virtue of having this proactive program, we're probably going to encounter those folks a lot sooner than we will, we would without the program, and then it could be a complaint that comes in that draws our attention to this as well, and, and then we would deal with that.
Okay, all right, so, just some thoughts, that, I, when I read that, I just, it caught my attention, because I had never heard about a registration before, you know, one of the common complaints that we get are, when people contact the council and there's a problem property in their neighborhood, is how, how slowly the, the time to address it is and bring it to a resolution, in large part, that's because of the current laws, state laws that are in the books, we can't just go in and impose fines, or, we have to give them, property owners, whether they're homeowners or, or renter landlords, an opportunity to fix whatever is deficient, as I think it should be, but the, the point that was made earlier tonight is really true, we don't have enough capability to be proactive, and not only, this program will not only impact rental properties, but it will free up the time of our current code enforcement staff to be proactive and to address those problem properties, as was mentioned tonight, I'm a landlord, my property looks good with the homeowner next door, their property looks lousy, you know, report it, you know, that, that would be my first thing, is report it so that we're aware of it, because we don't have enough manpower to go out and comb the streets, the second thing I'd like to say is, I'm really pleased that the Sacramento Association of Realtors and the California Apartment Association weighed in and came to us at our last council meeting and said we want to participate, and is always, it's been my experience that when the community, whether it's the residents or it's other professionals, get involved, we end up with a better product, and I think this is a better product than what we saw two weeks ago, and so I want to thank you for listening, Dave, and I want to thank you also, Lieutenant Gutierrez, for all that you've put into this, and you too, Greg, so thank you, and your staff that supported you, I, my feeling is similar to Jeff's, I don't like to see new fees and new rules imposed without really giving it some, some very serious and lengthy thought, and my hope ultimately, you know, utopian-like is that these people will perform themselves out of a job, very frankly, so thank you.
Thank you, Jeanne. Quick question on the registration fee schedule, it says annual registration fee for single families, 65 per property, annual registration of two to four units, 105, does that include single families, so if I own two single-family home rentals, that would fall under two to four units?
No, it's per property, so that would be two, two times 65.
Is that a, okay, got it, so there's no discount if you're, got a whole bunch of single-family?
No value discount.
I don't, I don't, I don't own any rentals, well, everybody touched on it, Jim Lofgren from the California Apartment Association, Brett, you know, with the concerns, it looks like we can have some good, positive results, Jeff, Jeanne mentioned it, you know, we need to monitor this program, and, and I think getting reporting back as we start out, and fixing the bad and, and accentuating the, the good that comes out of this, I think it's be a learning process for us if we move forward, so I want to know, you know, what a successful program looks like in three years, and, and at, at that time, I, I know we have the ability to make adjustments and improvements and such, in six years, and Jeanne mentioned working ourselves out of a job, what does it look like in 10 years? And I don't want to have a, a staff now that, you know, has worked themselves out of a job, so I, I would imagine answering my own question on this, that there'd be attrition in, in, in ways to fold that back and, and maybe scale back the, the program at that time?
Yes, certainly, I mean, we don't want to hire staff and then lay them off.
Exactly, well, that's, yeah, number one.
But I, I do agree with that sentiment, working yourself out of a job, that's the goal, but through attrition, promotion, other, you know, lateral movements, things like that, outside of the code enforcement, you know, I mean, that's certainly a possibility for, you know, down the road to, we may not need three code enforcement officers five years from now, maybe we only need two assigned to the program, and then we can look at adjusting the fees at that point.
Yeah, I'd like, you know, future councils to be able to adjust that and, and scale it back if need be, or, or reduce the fees, but keep it in place, because, you know, you still, time marches on with these buildings and our, and of course, our bodies, and I definitely see the, the benefit for, for the tenants and the landlords and adjacent properties with increased values, so I'm inclined to approve this, you know, you mentioned the safety and risk, and that's, that's a whole nother thing, especially with these apartments and elevated platforms and such, keeping an eye on that, one question I did have for you, Mr. Anderson, is, in, in the checklist or whatever, will we be inspecting to the code at the time it was installed, or are we going to be asking for some upgrades? I, I think carbon monoxide is one of them that didn't exist in the 70s, you know, as a, as a requirement, how are we going to handle those kind of things?
Yeah, it'll be strictly life safety and health and safety conditions that we'd be looking for, if there was an element that came up that had something to do with a design of a building or a structural of a building or a structural aspect, it's quite possible that we would be looking to enforce the codes that were in place at the time the property was built. It really depends on what it was. If it's an elevated element, a deck, something structural that was being repaired or replaced, that would definitely fall under today's standards. But, we would not be going into a building and looking at it and seeing something that was not a, if there was something that was not substandard or not a danger or a hazard, we would not be looking for code updates, if that answers your question.
Yeah, I think so.
Other than life safety. So, smoke alarms, carbon monoxide alarms, those are updates, and we would be enforcing that. But, that would pretty much be it.
And on the grand scheme, those are very expensive ways to protect lives. So, I get it. Thank you. Any further questions or comments?
Just, there's been mention of coming back and giving a report back, basically, of how successful the program is working and if any adjustments need to be made. Mayor Miller said in three years, but I don't think that.
Oh, no.
I think we maybe, every six months, maybe, and then annually after the first year.
Start out semi-annually. Yeah, no, I meant just at the end of three years, see where we're at, too. But, more regular updates would be important. Thanks, Jeanie. Anything else?
Mayor, I would go ahead. I see we have an ordinance and a resolution. I would move that we, via ordinance, establish a rental housing inspection program and via a resolution, adopt a rental housing inspection fee schedule.
And I take it that includes striking the first year program prorated language? Did you what?
With the?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay, sorry.
I don't know what, I forget what section number it is.
It's on.
Just with the changes noted by Lieutenant Gutierrez.
I'm sure that's what I meant. I'll have to go back and check.
It's on agenda packet, page sixty-eight.
Yeah, page sixty-eight. That had done them, yeah, that's.
Okay. Thank you. Is there a second to Mr. Slowey's motion?
A second?
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Any abstentions? The motion carries for one. Thank you for the work. And as we conclude, thank you for stakeholders, the apartment association and the realtors. But, you know, this isn't something staff just thought up. This started back on May twenty-second in our strategic planning, and it was something council-driven to come back with some kind of inspection program. And I appreciate what you've done in the time allotted, all the research and everything. And we'll move forward and best wishes. Thank you.
Next item is regular calendar item number ten. The subject is repeal and replace chapter thirty-four, article two of the Citrus Heights Municipal Code regarding smoking. The recommendation is to introduce for first reading, waive the reading of the entire ordinance, and ordinance repealing and replacing article two of chapter thirty-four of the municipal code regarding clean indoor air.
Good evening, council. Allison Bermudez, representing the Planning Division tonight, along with a couple partners here with Lieutenant Gutierrez. Dave Mitchell from Sunrise Recreation and Park District is also here with us, as well as we're honored to have Detective Semino in the audience, who, as you know, is our resident expert on marijuana, should any of those topics arise throughout the presentation. Tonight, you're looking to review and adopt a proposed ordinance to smoking. This update is necessary as our smoking ordinance that we have in place currently has been the same ordinance since prior, actually, to cityhood, has never been amended. And, as you know, laws have changed significantly over the past few years, so we do need to bring our current regulations up to state law. In addition to taking this time to bring our ordinance in compliance with state law, we are proposing four specific enhancements to the ordinance that would be more strict than state law. And then we also will be closing the loop on marijuana smoking, where the state law is deficient in defining medical marijuana, recreational marijuana, and where it may be smoked. So, we will be closing the loop on that as well. Tonight, I'll give you a brief overview of the legislative changes, just to remind you what has occurred over the past few years. We'll briefly talk about the proposed amendments that are consistent with state law, and then we'll spend a little bit more time talking about the amendments proposed that are more strict than state law. Dave Mitchell will talk about the proposal that we have, that we have that will ban smoking within the park and our recreation areas. Lieutenant Gutierrez will speak to the enforcement piece. We'll talk about community benefit and then go towards our recommendation. Legislation in California, you know, California led the way for the restriction of smoking in indoor spaces for several years. We know that we can't smoke in restaurants, retail centers, bars, things like that. And that's kind of been commonplace now for a very, very long time. In nineteen ninety-six, the Compassionate Use Act came into place, which introduced medical marijuana. It was amended in two thousand and three. Two thousand and sixteen, we saw some significant changes related to smoking, increase the smoking age to twenty-one. It extended the definition of smoking to include vape pens, smokeless tobacco, different types of marijuana, whether they're natural or manufactured, whatever those types are that they do. Cigars, pipes, and hookah are all now considered part of smoking. And then the most recent was in two thousand and eighteen with proposition sixty-four passing that legalized the non-medical marijuana or recreational marijuana. Just, and all these changes have occurred, really, and our ordinance has remained the same the entire time. It has not captured any of these amendments to state law. As mentioned, we know that areas that we can't smoke, commonplace, the restaurants, retail centers, theaters, airplanes, things like that, that we know that we can't smoke. But, I want to remind you of a couple areas that are smoke-free as per state law. And those are the common areas of apartment buildings, those indoor and outdoor areas. So, that would be hallways, recreation centers, the office, the swimming pool area. So, those common gathering places in apartment buildings, both indoor and outdoor, as per state law, must be smoke-free. Private homes that operate as a licensed daycare was, must be smoke-free the entire time. So, if you operate a licensed daycare facility at your private residence, there shall be no smoking in that residence. Private residences that operate as an adult daycare center for adult facility, for adult persons, shall remain smoke-free while adults are present that are part of the operation. And then public buildings and public vehicles, so this would be, in our case, City Hall, and operate, and vehicles leased and operated by the city must remain smoke-free. So, these are state law practices that are in place now. Just a couple I'd like to remind you of because they're kind of things we don't think about very often. In addition to bringing our ordinance in compliance with state law, we are proposing four specific areas that would be more strict. The state law does allow local jurisdictions, as well as businesses, to adopt their own smoking regulations, as long as they're more stringent than state law. And so, we are proposing to that in four areas. The first one being hotels and motels. State law requires that eighty percent of the smoking of motel, hotel rooms must be smoke-free. So, that's eighty percent by state law. We are proposing one hundred percent. Now, this isn't very difficult for us as we have one motel, but they are already one hundred percent smoke-free. So, this was an easy, an easy one without issue. Outdoor dining patios, really, they are not currently by state law prohibited against smoking. Most people don't do it. I think most people probably assume you can't do it, but it is not written in state law. So, we are proposing to include that in our ordinance, that outdoor dining patios would be smoke-free. We are proposing to also include a separation from entrance of smoke, smoking areas from entrances into businesses that are smoke-free. So, as you're walking into a restaurant, as you're walking into the theater, or into a business that is a non-smoking area, you would be able to enter that business through a smoke-free area by having this twenty-foot required separation. So, walking down a sidewalk in a shopping center, or maybe there's a restaurant, but people hang out in front and smoke, to get into this smoke-free facility, you need to walk through the smoke. So, we are proposing to include this twenty-foot separation, and this would be just from the primary entrance of that business. So, smoking could be separated from that entrance. It could be a side. It could be a smoking patio in the back or something like that. This is just really to give the primary entrance a smoke-free area. And then the last component would be to prohibit smoking in our outdoor recreation areas, and that one we'll get into a little bit more depth here. I want to define, and let you know what we're considering, recreation areas. And these are outdoor areas that are open to the public, basically for recreation purposes. So, that's going to be our parks, athletic fields, our swimming pools, gardens, our nature preserve, skate parks, and our trails. Those would all become smoke-free. And Dave Mitchell is here, and he is going to speak to this and give his support and his reasons why.
Can I ask a question before Dave speaks? And I know, right, we have one nine-hole golf course, but, you know, it does say golf course, even though it says disc golf courses. How do other areas treat their golf course? Because, I mean, I know a lot of folks smoke or, you know, whether it's cigarettes or cigars on a golf course. I haven't ever heard of another jurisdiction putting a golf course in there. That one actually surprises me. I'm fine with the rest, but that one, I'm not aware of another entity that does that. And I, did we do any research on?
Not specific to which courses would be smoke-free. Some courses are managed by municipality that may have more strict smoking regulations versus a private course, like what we have here. So, we would have, we could do more research if you wish to find out which ones do do that.
I just don't know if I want to be setting state precedence on a, you know, private course as opposed to not. But, that, again, I support this. I just, I missed that one the first time through, or it wasn't there. I don't know. But, that one, again, never seen that before. And I have a, I'll leave it at that.
Okay. Now, Mr. Mitchell.
Good evening, Eric. Good evening, council. Thank you for the opportunity. I'm Dave Mitchell, the Parks Administrator for Sunrise Recreation and Park District. We oversee twenty-three parks here in Citrus Heights. And on behalf of the board, I'm very pleased to be here to support the amendments to the ordinance here in Citrus Heights. The Board for Sunrise Recreation and Park District has been discussing kind of smoking, smoking in the park system for the past two years. We knew the Prop sixty-four was coming up, and that kind of brought, kind of at the forefront, the concern, at least for our board, for our discussion about how that portion, which is marijuana, would be impacting the park system here in Citrus Heights. The board had a full discussion about setting aside no smoking areas within parks, couldn't quite put arms around how that would happen, limiting certain areas of the parks. Maybe parking lots would be smoking, the rest of the park would not. Once again, we kind of grappled with the fact of truly, how to find that and how to enforce that. So, at the end in two thousand and seventeen, the board supported no smoking in the park system or any ordinances that would come out to address that. The issues really that the park district faces is not so much about cigarette smoke on the golf courses, as the council member mentioned. The issues really are around marijuana and open flames in our open space area. My office receives concerns from the public about dugouts and athletic fields, our skate park, some of our covered picnic areas from residents who are saying, "Mr. Mitchell, what can you do to help us? People are smoking marijuana in there. They're around my children, and it's a nuisance, and what can you do?" And although we work very closely with Citrus Heights Police Department, ordinances such as what's before you today will really help strengthen the hand of CHPD to be able to pretty much enforce a health and safety aspect of it. Certainly, we're looking for an educational piece as opposed to a lot of infractions or a lot of tickets being passed out. The other area that we receive a lot of concern is in our open spaces. Almost the majority of our open spaces are here in Citrus Heights. The definition of our open spaces is kind of an undeveloped area, our oak trees, our tall grass, areas like that. Stock Ranch is one of our biggest open spaces. We'll get calls from residents there asking us about our overnight campers that are in the park system right now, having open flames in the area, and what can you do to help us? We're very concerned about the fire danger. Certainly, smoking in the open spaces, as what's been happening in the American River Parkway, and what County of Sacramento's regional parks have been dealing with, several park, several fires in the American River Parkway. We hope that did not be happening here in Citrus Heights. So, on behalf of the park district, we're very excited and hopeful that we'll be able to work together to find an ordinance that works for you and also works for the citizens in helping us just bring a safer and healthier environment to the park system. Parks are certainly open to everybody, and they're welcome and joyful, and we're just trying to make more of an enjoyable environment. So, thank you for your time.
Thanks for your time. Do you have any questions?
Yes.
Uh, any?
Sorry. Didn't mean to jump on you there, Jeff.
No, that's fine.
So, I know that, that your concerns are a big part of this ordinance change, and I certainly understand that. And as a lifelong non-smoker, appreciate a smoke-free environment. My question to you, Dave, is if this ordinance gets passed, what is the park district going to do to help enforce it, basically? Are you, as far as posting most smoking signs, you know, educating the public, I'm sure through your publications. But, the first line of defense on someone who's violating this isn't going to be the police department. That's going to be the last resort, the last card played out of the hand.
Correct.
Because they have more serious crimes to pursue. So, I would presume that the first line of defense is going to come from your staff or from your activity. Your folks are at the parks doing maintenance and programs and things. So, have you developed a plan for that? And what will that look like?
The board talked about a year and a half outreach program on our behalf to the community, informing neighborhood associations. Of course, here in Citrus Heights, attending those meetings, getting out our word. We have talked about changing our signs, or we will change our signs within the park system to read "no smoking." And then a general education process. We have, of course, our rec guide that gets mailed out. We have our websites. We have our social media that we do. Just to bring that into light, that we're working towards, you know, no smoking in our park system in all areas, certainly within compliance of the ordinance that the city passes. And then, after that, we will continue to start to work with CHPD if we have areas in the parks, very similar to how we're working right now, where we have trouble spots in the parks with either our overnight guests and/or excessive drinking or things of this nature. We'll work them on kind of spot enforcement, if you might, to clean up those areas of the park system. But, our board discussed about a year and a half of an educational, educational, to get the word out.
Okay. That's, I'm, that's great. I'm glad to hear that. I guess an immediate response you could have would be to post signage.
Right.
So, is that part of your plan, your budget to do, change your signs out to, if we, if we approve this, it's going to become effective, what, in thirty days? Thirty days after the second reading. After the second reading, yeah. So, it's typical ordinance. So, my hope would be that you, that you're ready to go at that point, you know, so that the ordinance is in place and, and the public is aware of it from the get-go.
Yeah, our, the staff's basically just waiting on approval from me for the signage. So, they've had it on my desk for a while now, and so I'd.
So, you need to hear from us first. I got that. Okay.
Kind of. Thank you.
Jeanie hit a triple. She asked my exact question, signage, and, you know, did you guys budget for that? Because from an enforcement standpoint, if you don't have it posted, you know, CHPD isn't going to be able to show up and say, "Hey," I mean, they can tell them to stop, that's fine, but, you know, that would be the last resort. First would be have the signs up. A lot of people, "Oh, okay, can't do it." Then, you know, staff can kindly mention it to them. And don't want CHPD with, you know, to be the first call. And again, you have to notify people when that is decided. So, as long as you've, you know, got that packet sitting on your desk, I'm good.
So, as long as you've, you know, got that packet sitting on your desk, I'm good.
All right. Thank you.
Thanks, Dave.
Thanks, Dave. All right. So, you brought up the next topic, and that's enforcement. So, Lieutenant Gutierrez will give us an overview on the enforcement piece.
Good evening again, Mayor and City Councilmembers. Deputy Terrace with the Police Department. So, clearly, by virtue of this being an ordinance, there is an enforcement component to this. And if somebody were to call in a violation of this ordinance, the Police Department would prioritize that call and respond accordingly. Having said that, there is a graduating penalty for it. It would be an infraction. The first infraction would be $50. If a second infraction occurs within a year of that first, it would be $100. And then, the third in a year would be $150. That's something we hope to never get to. Our first priority would be education, like we've been talking about in the open spaces, but also for businesses. If somebody called in one of these outdoor dining areas, we would want to try to mediate that and provide education, make sure they're aware of the ordinance, look at the building from a perspective of, is there something the business owner could do more of to make it less inviting to smoke? Are there ashtrays sitting around? Are there, you know, do they not have the proper signage, those things? But ultimately, if you have somebody who is a repeat offender and is smoking around juveniles in a park and is just not willing to cooperate, then it provides a tool to help mitigate those challenges. And then, to speak to the enforcement in the park, if this is passed and ultimately enacted, we would work with the Park District to develop an MOU between the Park District and the City of Citrus Heights, so that the Police Department, if it came to that point, could enforce in the parks.
Thank you. All right. I want to talk a little bit about the public outreach that has occurred through this process. There's been a great collaboration between the Planning Division, Police Department, and the Park District, as well of all put effort into making this the best possible ordinance that we can for our community. Several months ago, we did distribute this proposal to our neighborhood associations, the Chamber of Commerce, our business districts, and we have not received any input from any of those, either for or against. So, I take that as good news. And it has been available on the city's website for the past several months as well. We have received some letters that were included in your packet. They were all in support. One was actually from a resident of an apartment who was in great support of the ordinance and actually liked something stronger. And then, Mr. Ristabin, the owner of several McDonald's here in the city, was, wrote a letter of support, as well as the ones that were received from the Tobacco Coalition and the American Cancer Society. In addition, at your seat tonight, you did find a letter that came in late today from the California Apartment Association on the ordinance, and they have a couple changes that they're proposing, and that was given to you for your consideration. Just kind of reiterate the community benefits. Very exciting to be able to consider this, your possibility of providing further protection for our community, because it really does protect our citizens in additional ways from secondhand smoke. Will contribute to the enjoyment of our recreational areas. We'll be joining 101 other cities that currently prohibit smoking in outdoor dining areas and 228 other communities that currently prohibit smoking in all their recreational areas. So, we're joining that list, should this pass. So, I just wanted to recap the four areas that really are more strict than state law, and that would be the outdoor dining prohibition, the hotels and motels, the recreational area prohibition, and then the entrances to businesses. We are closing the loop in considering that medical and non-medical marijuana shall not be smoked in public. Current state law has interpreted that you actually could smoke medical marijuana in public, not recreational. So, this ordinance will close that loop, so it will be neither kind. And then, it does bring in the enforcement piece, as we just talked about. We are recommending that you adopt this proposal tonight, but happy to answer any questions and further clarify anything that might have missed.
Questions down here? No?
In going through the letters, they talk about there's 101, I believe was the number that came up, cities in which this particular, these ordinance have been passed and without consequence. And they talk about the restaurants and things, but they don't talk about golf courses or larger public areas, at least that I'm able to pick out. And if I look at that right, I think there's 480-some-odd cities in California, 480-something. So, we're talking about 20%, maybe 25% approximately of cities that don't have, that have the ordinances, but that apparently aren't including something like the, at least that I can see, the golf course or large open space language that are totally smoke-free. So, do we have any information on that?
I recall several jurisdictions do limit smoking in recreation areas, but, say, Rancho Cordova, Oak Grove, but it doesn't pertain to all recreational areas. This particular ordinance would be all recreational areas, which I believe it's 200-and-something cities that currently do do that for all recreation.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Because I've got some speaker comments before we get into our closings.
I'd like to hear this.
Okay. I agree. All right. First up, I have Jim Lofgren, California Apartment Association, followed by Marissa Greenband.
Jim Lofgren, again, from the California Apartment Association. The trend has been in the apartments to move towards smoke-free housing. There's a lot of benefits. You eliminate disputes between tenants, reduces maintenance costs at turnover. And we're proud to be partners with groups in the community that support smoke-free housing, including Breathe California. And Marissa Greenband will be speaking shortly, so I do want to give her testimony. But there is a desire, in many cases, to try to have apartments go completely smoke-free. And we think that owners should have a little bit of flexibility, but in spirit of compromise, we've proposed an amendment to the ordinance, and basically that that would require every lease or rental agreement entered into, on or before a certain date. I say April 1. We need to give enough time to owners to let them know about this change. But it would require that an apartment building shall include a provision that specifies the areas on the property where smoking is not prohibited. And this kind of complements state law. And the objective here, really, is to provide disclosure to the tenant at the beginning of the tenancy. So, when a tenant comes in, they should be fully informed of what the smoking policy is on the property. And there was a discussion about how best to do it. Could there be signage? Or could it be verbally done? And the goal was maybe to provide some proof. And so, the proof is in the rental agreement. I'm proud to say that the California Apartment Association has already created a rental agreement, a month-to-month lease, a month-to-month rental agreement and a lease that already includes in there these provisions. And so, it's not going to be a burden on our industry to do this. And I think it's a good consumer protection effort. And in the spirit of working with those that are promoting healthy environments for residents, we're willing to go ahead and accept this compromise language. And if you would like to incorporate that into the ordinance, we would appreciate that. And the question is really the date, and partly, it's how much notice you're going to give to owners, how you're going to go out and let people know about this. We will do our part. And so, it could be April 1. It could be July 1. That's something that we're open to. The other item is our CIA staff attorney noticed that there is an amendment in there that kind of might undermine the intent here. And where it says here under Section 3436, it talks about private residences. And unless otherwise prohibited by this article, smoking is allowed in private residences. And we think it'd be better if you clarified it by talking, I think you're talking about owner-occupied. I think it brings a little bit more of clarity to it. Our attorney would prefer you just, you know, remove that completely, because there are, is my understanding, that there are some condo communities where they prohibit smoking in the private residences through the CCNRs. So, you may want to do a little bit of research on that, but either strike that whole section or change private residences to owner-occupied residences. Happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Any questions to Jim?
I read your letter, and I understand the concern. One of the things that came to my mind was the owner-occupied, I think, is a good definition of what we're trying to say. Are there any, I guess it's a question, first of all. Are there any instances where there are CCNRs in, like, a townhouse development where they own their, they own their unit, but it's still set up like an apartment building? So, I mean, are there CCNRs that would, that would even prohibit that within their own home, if they're, if they're subject to CCNRs?
You know, I am not an expert in that, and that's why I'm passing on what came from our, our staff attorney. I would maybe ask that the city attorney maybe explore this a little bit.
Yeah. I don't think we should take this too far.
Yeah. I think, what I'm suggesting is, you need, I would explore this to make sure that what your intent is, it's written how you want it to be, so.
Yeah.
So, that's just my comment on that.
So, you know, so changing private residences to owner-occupied would resolve the one question, because a private residence could be occupied by a renter, is what you're saying?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Owner-occupied. Because, and the landlord should have the right to impose.
Right. That would undermine it.
A rent-free environment, if he so chose, basically. I concur with that.
I was going to ask Ruth Ann Sigler, our attorney, to weigh in.
Yes, I have an alternative suggestion. I think the concern, first of all, the section in question is on page 93 of your agenda packet, Section 34-36. I think the concern that's been expressed is whether this could have what's called unintended consequences, such as restricting one way or another. I think the better course of action is to revise Section 34-36 to state that this article, which is the entirety of this ordinance, this article shall not be construed to affect smoking in private residences. In other words, you know, we're not, I don't want to get into characterizing owner-occupied one way or another. I respect what the gentleman is saying about, you know, restriction one way or another. If we merely add language to replace 34-36 to say, "This doesn't affect smoking in private residences. It leaves property owners or apartment owners free to impose restrictions in their leases if they so desire or not." And that's my recommendation on 34-36. In addition, if I may, the other suggestion in Mr. Lofgren's email is the, a proposed addition that, and he was, you know, one date or another, that every lease or rental agreement shall include a provision that specifies the areas on the property where smoking is not prohibited. My recommendation is that you not add that provision. I don't know that the city, I don't see that it's necessary from the city's perspective, and I don't know that the city wants to get into the business of requiring a specific term or condition in each and every lease or rental agreement. So, I would recommend a not to add on that provision.
Thank you. We'll take that under advisement. Did you have anything further, Mr. Lofgren, other than?
But other than, I'm happy to work with the city attorney to come up with language that would satisfy the spirit of the, our compromise, where we're trying to promote a requirement of disclosure, because that is the agreement that we reached. And if this isn't the best language to do so, then maybe there's some alternative one, because that, we are, this is a, there is disclosure requirements in other jurisdictions in this region, and we've not encountered any problems associated with that.
Thank you. Next up, Marissa Greenband, followed by Kimberly Bankston Lee.
My name is Marissa Greenband. I'm here from Breathe, California Sacramento region. We are a local nonprofit organization that advocates for clean air and healthy lungs. I just want to start with a few statistics, since we haven't really talked about the health effects of secondhand smoke yet tonight. Over 41,000 people who have never been smokers in their life die every year from secondhand smoke exposure. If I did my math correctly, that would be as if about 47% of the residents of Citrus Heights died every year from secondhand smoke exposure. Secondhand smoke is the smoke that comes out of a smoker's mouth or the side stream of the tobacco product that they're smoking, and other people inhale that involuntarily. And it causes premature deaths in adults, and it can also cause sudden infant death syndrome in children, and ear infections and asthma in children as well. Secondhand smoke exposure is a prominent issue in multi-unit housing. Air filtration systems, ventilation systems are not effective. The World Health Organization has also taken a stance that the only effective way to prevent secondhand smoke exposure in vulnerable populations is through policy, and the only safe level of secondhand smoke exposure is none at all. So, while Breathe wishes that we could aim for the implementation of, in our utopia, 100% smoke-free policies at all multi-unit housing locations possible, we understand that steps need to be taken to get there one day. And that's why we have taken steps to compromise with the California Apartment Association and Unite to propose the disclosure policy that was brought forth for you today, in addition to Breathe supporting the four points that were brought forward today earlier. We strongly urge you to approve the addition of a disclosure policy to the smoking ordinance at the time of lease agreement. The disclosure will be benefit of both potential renters, landlords, and multi-unit housing locations. And I would like to echo the fact that multiple municipalities do have these disclosure statements. As far as the benefits of landlords go, landlords will be able to rest easy, knowing that official disclosure documents in the lease have been signed by residents. This means that dealing with any sort of complaints brought forth by either smokers at non-smoking properties or non-smokers at smoking properties will prove much easier to resolve, thanks to the signed disclosure documentation that made sure that that lessee was aware of the policy or lack of policy at the location they signed the lease for. Potential renters will also benefit from a disclosure policy. Very simply put, renters will be able to make a more informed decision about where they live, the environmental secondhand smoke that they would be exposing themselves to, and their children to. Financially, it's potential that renters might save money by only submitting applications to locations where there's either a smoke-free policy or no-smoke-free policy on the landlord end. This could mean that there is a little less confusion in the pool of applicants and maybe reduces the paperwork that goes through on their end. As always, in the context of the most vulnerable populations in our region, the benefits of an informed choice on living environment and money spent on rental applications will be magnified. Thank you in advance for your consideration to the proposed disclosure policy, in addition to the amendment of the language in Section 3436, prior to discussed. I strongly believe, and Breathe strongly believes, that the proposed disclosure ordinance would make the rental application process more simplified, streamlined, and informed for both renters and landlords alike. Thank you, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? Thank you, Melissa. Kimberly, followed by Tim Gibbs, as our final speaker.
Good evening, Councilmembers. My name is Kimberly Bankston Lee. I am with the SOL Project. That stands for Saving Our Legacy African-Americans For Smoke-Free Safe Places. The SOL Project has been around for a little over 11 years now, helping different communities with issues of smoke exposure. According to the U.S. Surgeon General, secondhand smoke is dangerous at any level of exposure, as has been mentioned earlier. The CDC estimates 2.5 million non-smokers have died from health problems caused by exposure to secondhand smoke. With exposure, secondhand smoke can lead to debilitating diseases such as cancer, respiratory disease, and heart disease. Children and adults are likely to be exposed to secondhand smoke in houses, workplaces, and public places, including outdoor recreation areas and outdoor dining. Because of the negative health effects of secondhand smoke exposure, we are well, that are well documented, one of the most important steps a community can take to improve health of its residents is to create more smoke-free safe places. My project has recently helped the City of Elk Grove with their smoke-free outdoor dining. We have also helped the City of Rancho Cordova with their smoke-free. We have also helped the city of Rancho Cudova with their smoke-free outdoor dining and their smoke-free recreational areas. We provide technical assistance, resources. You mentioned signage, we have sample signage that we can provide. You were asking about golf courses, we can get that information. There's a couple of organizations. One, Americans for Nonsmokers Rights have a registry of all the smoke-free policies in the United States. And then American Lung Association in California has a list of all the jurisdictions in California specifying what areas of recreation, and we'd be, be happy to help you with this ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Gibbs?
I'm Tim Gibbs with the American Cancer Society, Cancer Action Network, Senior Government Relations Director. I'm also up here wearing, with, with wearing two hats, I'm also the vice chair of the Sacramento Tobacco Control Coalition. I won't repeat a lot of the points that my colleagues from Breathe California, or Kimberly from SOUL made, but, you know, we do know that exposure to secondhand smoke when outside is a significant health risk. You know, the Air Resources Board has declared it a toxic air contaminant. Couple of points, you had asked about golf courses. Many smoke-free outdoor recreation areas do include golf courses. Just a quick Google, Palo Alto, Glendale. Couldn't figure out, as I was trying, whether Sacramento does or not. But, you know, I can get that information for you. Many ordinances, smoke-free outdoor ordinances, just sort of blanket smoke-free outdoor areas and include their golf courses. There's a few cities that have specific exemptions for their golf course. Obviously, we'd like to see the whole thing smoke-free, but you wouldn't be going out on a limb if you made the golf course smoke-free, because many cities indeed do that. So, thank you for doing this, and we appreciate it, and appreciate the time.
Thank you. That's all the speaker sheets I have. It's a pleasure, the council.
Go ahead.
Yeah, you know, as the, as the son of two parents that died in their sixties as a result of smoking, and watching fifty years of, you know, being told how bad smoking is, and, and looking at eight to ten dollars for a pack of cigarettes, I don't understand why anybody picks up a cigarette for the first time. I just don't get it, I don't understand why it's still even, even around, but, but it is. And it's still legal, and we all have our own vice, maybe, I don't know. I have my own, it doesn't involve smoke, but we all have our own thing that other people don't agree with necessarily, but I think we need to be careful when we impose restrictions on, on people who do things that are legal. But when your legal activity spills over and, and disrupts my enjoyment of life, that's when your activity has really gone too far. Right now, we're thinking about twenty feet for the front doors and things like that. I think that's way too small. That's me to you. And there may only be one way for me to get into the restaurant, and that's past you. And so I would encourage us to maybe look at a little further distance than that for the doors. I would, I would actually support removing the golf courses from this. Again, I think that at some point, the reality of it is that, yes, not one puff of smoke is good for you, but, but out on a golf course and maybe even open space, that things are gonna dissipate. They're gonna go away, and the things that are in the air around us are gonna be a whole lot worse for us than, than somebody who might have smoked there five minutes ago, or whatever. And on golf courses, people are so spread out that I don't know that there's going to be much intrusion from one person to another. So, I, oh, and the other thing is, I'm really mixed on the, the outdoor dining. I don't know, I almost think that we might want to think about some sort of exemption. If a, if a restaurant wants to designate a certain area of their outdoor, as, as an outdoor dining area where they can smoke, maybe that's a way to go about that. I'm surprised that we actually haven't heard from anybody regarding that. But the bottom line is, again, if your enjoyment crosses over and impedes somebody else, that's when it should be stopped. So I will definitely go along with this, but don't want to go too far.
Thanks. Mr. Slade?
So my comments, one, I support ninety-nine percent of this ordinance. Three words, if they stay in there, I'll be honest, I'm gonna be a no vote, disk slash golf course. And I'll tell you why. I mean, yes, I play golf, and I think, you know, certain things government needs to stay out of. It's bad enough that Sacramento downtown legislatures are looking at trying to say, put sales tax on my round of golf. But golf is a billion-dollar industry in California, and I just don't want my name associated when my buddies come up and say, hey, you know, I can't, they can't, they can't smoke as a girl on the golf course when it's bothering nobody. So, I'm just saying. I've, everything I agree with here, but those three words will make me a no, no vote on this effort. Otherwise, I'm good if we strike those three words.
Okay.
I have no problem with striking those three words, so.
We'll see what happens. Mr. Fox? Well, let's get into, any, any further questions?
Well, the other thing, the other thing I wanted to mention is, I believe on dining outside, I'm thinking of the Elephant Bar, I believe they have gone smoke-free outside now, but there was a time when they weren't, and they had a section, and two feet away was the next section, that was smoke, smoking, and another section, two feet away, that wasn't smoking, and you couldn't sit there and not breathe in smoke. So I, I am okay with leaving the outdoor dining smoke-free. In fact, I, I support that, because it's like the old days in the airplane, where you could smoke in the back half of the airplane. If you're that last seat in the non-smoking section, you might as well be sitting in the middle of the smoking section, so. So that, the only thing that I, I questioned the whole thing with the, my eyebrows came out on the golf course thing, too, because I know people are out there by themselves, and so I would be supportive of striking that from the ordinance. To get Jeff's yes vote.
Well, I mean, you know, the reality is, it's the one golf course we have in town, let's be honest, it's rinky-dink, it's nine holes, will it make, I'm sorry for the owner, but, you know, will it make that big of a difference? No, but I don't want my name associated negatively with golf. I mean, come on, that's just not gonna happen with me, so. I know it's selfish, but that's the way it is. And it's more than the state law requires, so.
Anything else?
Call me selfish, if you want.
No, I'm just, I have to agree. I play golf with guys that, they've been smokers all their life, and it's one of the few times they can actually sit down, relax, and have a cigarette, and enjoy their form of recreation and their time without imposing their smoke on somebody else. So for me, that's, that's gotta be out.
I, yeah, I think that's a reality now. I think as time goes on, you're just gonna see less and less with the education efforts, and we just know it's bad for you. And I jokingly like to say, we're gonna designate a smoking area out in the Mojave Desert, that'll be, that'll be the final solution. All right. With that, I'd-
So let, let me take a stab.
Sure.
So, my first thing is, you know, take out disk slash golf course. My second thing is, from the ordinance, I heard two things from Ruth Ann. I heard one, as to the second part of the letter, change some verbiage, you know, this is what the Apartment Association is recommending, change some verbiage there, but you said from your end, don't put the disclosure in. Is that what I heard correctly?
That was my suggestion.
Right.
Let me just say that the, someone else, I was also passed alternative language, because they still would like some disclosure. Alternative language that was just handed to me, owners of apartment buildings shall disclose in writing their smoking policy to tenants on or before, for any tenancy beginning on or after July one, two thousand nineteen. So I think the question is, do you want to add to the ordinance a disclosure policy requiring apartment owners to disclose smoking versus non-smoking areas to their tenants?
Okay. Fair enough.
And then the other change is the revision to section thirty-four dash thirty-six.
And your recommendation was leave it as is, but add?
Change the lang, I'm gonna go in reverse order. Change the language in thirty-four, thirty, thirty-four dash thirty-six.
Right.
So this doesn't affect smoking in private residences?
This, this article should not be construed to affect smoking in private residences. In other words, private property owners, do whatever you like, this ordinance doesn't affect it.
I like that, yeah.
That's one. The second is, do you want to have, do you want to add any disclosure requirement for apartment owners on their tenants?
Can I ask a question?
Go.
Is there anything keeping them from adding that disclosure on their own?
Absolutely not.
Yeah, but I just assume you like that.
Okay.
All right. So my motion is gonna be to take the ordinance as is, striking the three words, disk slash golf course, incorporating the language change that Ruth Ann recommended, and if you didn't get that, she can get with you after. And I'm okay with not adding the disclosure requirement. So basically, the language change that Ruth Ann recommended, and then the striking the three words, disk, golf course, and moving the ordinance as it otherwise stands.
Second.
Is motion a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? Motion carries.
Yeah, thank God, I'm not associated with bringing the golf course. Thank you. I know. That's probably.
What we got next?
Next item is regular calendar, item number eleven, and the subject is city board and commission appointment process. And so currently, at least one month prior to the terms expiring on our planning commission and our construction board of appeals, the city clerk's office gives notice of those vacancies and accepts applications. Those applications are compiled and then distributed to the city council for independent review, and then subsequently, appointments are made by a vote of the council at a regular city council meeting. And to enhance the process, the appointment process, we're recommending to update the application questionnaire, and also requiring that each applicant participate in a video interview. The video, each applicant would be asked a series of four questions, and it would be limited to no more than ten minutes in length. And then the videos, along with the applications, would be distributed to the council for independent review prior to making the appointments at a regular meeting. And so staff is seeking council's feedback on the proposed process, and any direction if staff should move forward with the proposed process.
And Ms. Van, you did sit down with us, along with the city manager and Jennifer Tilleri from your office on this, and, and briefed Jeannie and I on the proposed proposal. I'd just like to, to call out Jennifer on this, and the work she's done to, to help improve the process, so. Are there any other questions or comments about, about this?
Just, just a comment, I mean, I've been here long enough, if you see the process, you know, I, I make it a personal choice to call all the applicants, but I, you know, in some cases, we get twenty-one, and, you know, you're kinda looking at them, and you know one, you don't know the other. At least I think this is a, you know, one, that questionnaire definitely needs to be updated. Two, I think the, you know, the video interview, if you will, gives us a chance, I mean, half the time, we don't see the people before we even appoint them. Not that, you know, I care about how they dress, but, but it's, it's not bad to see how they interact with that, because they're gonna be, you know, on, on TV here, and quite frankly, they're representing the city. So I have no problem with it. I mean, ultimately, it's still up to us to appoint them and ratify them, so to me, it just makes the process easier for us, because we'll have a more complete package when we get it.
And I like the questions, how they were updated, just a little better, better information for us all.
In my legalese type mind, we want to make sure that those four questions are asked the same way, the same wording, for every candidate, for the record, correct?
Yes, they will be asked the same four questions in the same manner.
Okay, great, thank you.
Any comments, or further?
Nope, I'm good with it.
I don't know.
This is, this is informational, isn't it?
Right, I think they're just looking for direct.
If there's a concurrence from authority of the council members to move forward with the process, we will go ahead and move forward.
I'm good with it.
Good.
You do.
Thumbs up, all around. Thank you.
Thank you. So the next item is department reports, item twelve, the subject is tree photo contest by the Community and Economic Development.
Hi, good evening, Allison Ruben is here again with the planning division. Something a little bit more fun and enlightening to close the evening, we're gonna talk about trees real briefly. I want to remind you, this information was shared with you a few years ago, and we did a pretty in-depth study of the trees in the community, but our fourteen-point-four square mile city has over twenty-five percent of its land covered in tree canopy. That is a very large number in comparison to our neighboring jurisdictions, several percentages above the city of Sacramento and the city of Roseville, who both somewhat claim to be the city of trees, and really, we are the city of trees with twenty-five percent tree canopy. So we need to share that and let people know that that exists. I think it's something we should be very proud of, that we do have over a hundred and seventy-five unique species of trees in the city. Our most common species is our valley oaks, twenty-five percent of the trees are valley oak. The rest are mixed up with a variety of different species, including there is some monkey trees out there. I don't know exactly where they're located, but if you know where they are and see them, I'd love to take a look at them. But we do have a species called a monkey tree that exists in the city. And as I mentioned, our tree canopy is, is quite a bit larger than the neighboring community. So with that information, we thought it was important that we share that with the community through a variety of different ways, as long as continue to protect that tree canopy, so it doesn't diminish. A couple of things that we have done, in February of two thousand seventeen, we initiated the Tree Assistance Program. This program was, is a trial program that we've been doing with our tree mitigation funds, and commonly, what we would receive are phone calls into the planning division with people who have trees, they care about it, but they're concerned about its health, it's declining, it's leaning, different things are happening to it, and they really don't know how to proceed. And to do anything with that tree, they would have had to get a permit, and in order to get a permit, they have to get an arborist out to review the tree and write a report. So this trial program that we started, we do offer that report writings assistance through an arborist that we have, that we have on contract, and they receive that service for free. So that's a great benefit, and just since February of last year, we have, she has visited over sixty-six different sites and written sixty-six reports. Most are, have been beneficial to the property owner and provided them information on preserving that tree and the tree canopy. Sunday Fun Day, she was grateful enough to come and join us. As you can see the picture, we had a little arborist as in booth, and people attending Sunday Fun Day could stop and ask her questions, and get her expert, expert advice for free on their trees. And was very successful on having people stop, and I guess my age showed, because sometimes we'd turn around, there'd be a nickel sitting on the desk, and people really thought it cost five cents. So we had to kinda rephrase that and say, no, it's just something from Lucy. So it was kinda, we joked about that all day long.
Cute.
Continuing to celebrate trees in the city, we are in process of preparing an application to become what's known as a Tree City USA. Most of the local jurisdictions around here have this honorary award, and we'd like to be part of that. So we are working through the criteria to be, to file that application, and we'll present that to you in December, just before we file the application. Part of that application process has us to find an Arbor Day and do a tree planting event. While those can be very elaborate events, they can also be very small events, consist of one tree, which is the route that we're taking this weekend. With the help of Mayor Miller, we'll be attending our campus enhancement event this weekend, and part of that, we'll be planting a new tree in the city's land, in our landscaping, and we'll be acknowledging this is our Arbor Day, and kind of our kickoff to our tree planting events, and continued celebration of Arbor Day next year in March and April, when the state recognizes Arbor Day and National Arbor Day in April.
What time am I supposed to be there?
So you'll be here at nine-thirty, and the soil will be nice and soft, so you can dig the hole.
I can dig that.
Mm-hmm, and we'll plant a tree, and you'll have a proclamation and so forth. So that is also a component of the application process.
I do think the requirement when one tree is planted, is the person planting it has to dig the hole, cannot be pre-dug, so.
That's right.
Just saying.
Bring his own equipment.
Got a gold shovel for you.
I'll be there about ten.
And then we do plan on doing some larger tree planting events, some have to do with the Park District and different areas throughout the community that will occur in the real Arbor Day in the spring. And then to kind of help get this out in the community, we have been doing- And then to kind of help get this out in the community, we have been doing a photo contest where people can submit trees on, or their photos of their trees online through the website. This has been on the website now since September, and it's a great way, people love talking about their trees. We found that out at Sunday Funday, as we heard a lot of stories. People would talk about the tree on their property, you know, how much family has seen it, what enjoyment and so forth. So I think this is a great way to capture this from the community and make our trees top awareness. So this is where I'm asking for your help, is what you're out talking to your neighbors and friends and the community, is ask them, you know, to look at the photo contest and submit a tree photo. And I want to show you some that have been submitted. This was submitted, our first entry in Sebar Sea Park on an early morning walk along their trail. This was submitted from one of the coaches at Mesa Verde High School as they were having practice. He thought the, the horizon of the trees fit, fit very well.
There's a monkey. Oh, it's gone.
And then this was the recent rains, brought this beautiful picture from a resident. So we are continuing to see, receive entries. We're looking for more. The contest is submitted online. It runs through January 31st. We want to also hear stories of people have trees, you know, maybe where mom and dad proposed, got engaged, you know, there was a swing there that I swung on my whole life. So we want to hear those kind of stories, too, and we'll share them, we've been sharing them on social media. And then a future council meeting, we'll bring them all back to you.
Suggestion that you put this on Nextdoor, get it out through Nextdoor if you haven't.
Good idea. Not done that platform.
Yeah.
And that concludes trees.
Thank you.
Love it.
Anything else?
The next item is city manager items, and there are none. Next item is items requested by council members and future agenda items.
Anything from up here?
Yeah.
And that should do it then, all right? And we're adjourned until November 8th. We'll see you then.